Kia ora everybody, please be seated. Welcome to the last full council meeting of the triennium. I'd like to remind you ladies and gentlemen that the council meeting will be live streamed to the web. And for voting purposes councillors are reminded to raise your hands for any division. I have no apologies, so we're going to move straight to announcements. And the first announcement is the New Zealand Rugby Taiaha ceremony. Kia ora.
Fakataka taho ki te oro, fakataka taho ki te tonga. Ki amā kina kina ki uta, ki amā tara tara ki tai. Eheake ana te atakora, he tio, he hoha, he hoho, tihai maori ora.
Fakataka takawa, ko takava nuu takawa roa takawa fakatekei ka'ua ramaia te teke teke o te rani. E itaku taku ta'ua otaritata takataku te katavara na te tau na te tāwila. Te nai rā te afinuku te afe rani no te ororo e o matua. Ituwe itataka taki uwe uwe noku e uwe uwe rani. Te nai ka'aha hagi noiti te tuku atatapito. Ki noiti takāku rāri ki kiafutei nai tāu riki sa'iau te amārama, ha'unihe huihe.
Aikie.
Tāu maianga te hau. Tāu maianga te hau nuu ita hau roa. Te hau māia te rākau hau nai, tāu maianga. Tāu mai ki longa, tāu mai ki arō. Tāu mai ki waho, tāu mai ki roko. Te nai rākau ko te hau, tāu mai, bīle, bīle hau, pa'ima'a hīle.
Filma, thank you for that warm welcome, it's really lovely to be here, it's a little bit like home. Thank you for that really warm welcome, it's a real pleasure to present the Taiaha for the Wellington match of the DHL New Zealand Lions Series 2017. It's really fitting that we're presenting a Taiaha which is a traditional Maori people, it's all about challenge. It is the match trophy for the seven matches that have been played in seven regions around the country next year. And I think Wellington is totally up for the challenge of hosting the fans and the people that are coming to Wellington. So on behalf of New Zealand Rugby, thank you very much Wellington for hosting us in our islanders and welcoming our fans to present to the Taiaha.
And in presenting the Taiaha for this might end. This one is called Te Hau. Te hau is because the Hurricanes will fight for it, te hau is the wind, it is the tempest, it is the Hurricanes.
Et i komatu oru tima, fotuporo maori or au te arua, eruka me Tracy. Tenakoto 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 katao. I'd like to acknowledge you Luke as the komatu of New Zealand Maori rugby team. I'd also like to acknowledge all of the people that are here today, the executive leadership of the New Zealand Rugby. Welcome, welcome, welcome. I accept this Taiaha to ho on behalf of Wellington. We're really looking forward to the New Zealand Lions Irish and British Rugby Tour next year. We're looking forward to the games between the Hurricanes and the Lions and then the All Blacks and the Lions. This Taiaha will be awarded to the winner of the game between the Hurricanes and the Lions. I'm not sure that naming it to ho doesn't give it a certain advantage one way rather than the other. It's very fitting that you have named the Taiaha to ho. Rugby is incredibly important to people of New Zealand. And certainly as mayor over the last six years I've learnt a lot about rugby, particularly with the Rugby World Cup. Not least the eight seven is a round resounding victory. I also am very glad and we all have some tough times and some lessons to learn. I'm very glad that New Zealand Rugby is going to be working with the Human Rights Commissioner to make sure that issues about rights and gender are dealt with appropriately. And establishing a respect and responsibility manager role is a really good start. So we are really, really looking forward to the thousands of people that are going to come to the capital that are going to fill our hotels, spare bedrooms. And I dare say the next council will have just a few freedom camping issues to deal with. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Tenakoto, tenakoto, tenakoto katao. Could we have a round of applause for the real single? Now I'm going to come down to the lectern for the second announcement. And I'd like Robert Treasure to come up and stand next to me. Robert Treasure has served on the Tāwa Community Board since 1995. He was deputy chair for many years and in 2007 he became chair, a position he has held ever since. I want to acknowledge Robert and thank him on behalf of council for his service to Tāwa. One of the people that persuaded us that Tāwa should continue to have a community board. I was talking that over with a few other councillors and we all thought, gosh let's be tidy. Why should one place have a community board and not anywhere else? But the leadership that the Tāwa Community Board brought and the support from their community absolutely convinced us to keep it. Robert has been very involved through the Tāwa Community Patrol and Tāwa Rotary as well. Involved in Vibrant Tāwa, the Tāwa Progressive and Rate Payers Association. He's worked on Our City Our Future Strategy in 1995. I think there's a few other members of that strategy actually in the room here tonight. And as you look forward, I'm sure you'll see some of the quotes from Our City Our Future have been embedded in council policy. He's been an active voice on issues such as graffiti, spices landfill and responsible pet ownership. And Tāwa's seen a lot of exciting developments over the last few years including Ara Tāwa, the pool upgrade, the community gardens at Coronation Park and now of course the work that's going on in the town centre. So thank you Robert for your 21 years of service on the Tāwa Community Board. And I'd like to present you with this token of the city council and the city's appreciation for your support of democracy. Wellington book and a pair of cufflinks.
Thank you. I think we both read the same speech actually or read the same speech, but thank you very much Celia, sorry your worship. I arrived in New Zealand in 1987 on an international transfer from the Middle East. I did not think that I would still be here 29 years later, it's the longest I have lived anywhere. I worked in Tāwa and have lived there ever since. I came as a bachelor, but in 1991 I married and this month we have celebrated our 25th wedding anniversary. By 1995 we had two young sons, it totally changed my perspective. I wonder why. I stood for the Tāwa Community Board and was elected as has been the case for each of the six elections since. In my first term I was a member of Our City Our Future, Strategy for Wellington's Future. It was a wonderful opportunity and it is gratifying to see some of those ideas implemented. Albeit that they may have taken a long time, we have tried. On behalf of the Tāwa Community Board I have spoken to government ministers, select committees, MPs, judges, lawyers, mayors, councils, councillors. Thank goodness knows who else, some we won, some we did not, yet. I have been chair of the Tāwa Community Board for three terms and deputy chair I think for all of the others. For me Tāwa is a special place as is Wellington. Thank you to all the mayors, councillors, council officers who have helped and guided me over the duration. Also to the Tāwa Community Board members who have had to put up with me. I've been a Tāwa Community Board member for 21 years, reached my majority and it is now time to retire. Thank you very much.
And the third and much less exciting announcement is that I'm moving the valedictory speeches to the end of the evening. That means we will have a short unfilmed part while we have our public excluded and then move back into the valedictory speeches. Apparently it takes a mayor to move a report from general business and pass the committee reports. So do any of the members present have any conflicts of interest you wish to declare? So we'll now move on to confirmation of minutes. I move the motion that the council approve the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 31st of August. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Ahipini Mercer, I now put the motion which has been moved and seconded. Those in favour please raise your hands. I declare the motion carried. And I'd now like to move to the general business and 2.1 is the exciting report on our resilience strategy. I've been grateful for many people who have taught me about resilience. I've also been grateful that Wellington has been able to learn from Christchurch. In September 2010 there was the first of the Christchurch big earthquakes. And I think that put resilience and earthquake preparedness very much the top of our agenda. I'd like to, before I say anything else about the strategy, I'd like to acknowledge the work of the steering group. And there are a number of members of the steering group here today. Professor David Johnston is the co-chair of the steering group. And I'd like him to come up and say a few words and perhaps if the other members of the steering group would come up and flank him then we can see some of the other people that are here today. Alison I think it's you. Thank you.
Thank you very much your worship and councillors, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and share a few words. As the mayor said, I'm the co-chair of the steering group, the resilient steering group for the Hundred Resilience in Cities project. But I just want to acknowledge a few things and acknowledge the involvement of Wellington City and the council and the region and the work we do. City and the council and the region and the work we do. Wellington has always led the way in many areas and I think the area of building resilience in cities is something Wellington is leading the world on in many aspects. So as an academic, I have many roles, both nationally and internationally. I'm at GNS Science, I'm a professor of disaster management at Mass University here in Wellington, but have served on a number of UN committees looking at disaster resilience. So what I'm finding in Wellington is this, both the appreciation of the problem, but also the willingness of the entire city, the region, the councils, the institutions, the people of Wellington to address the problems we face. If there were simple solutions to these problems, we probably would have found them. But we live in a complex world, we're at a plate boundary, we have climate change, we have many pressing issues and the earthquakes in Canterbury but disasters around the world have shown us the challenges we need to face. So the Hundred Resilient Cities opportunity really was an opportunity for Wellington, but also the wider New Zealand to show some leadership on that. And it has been a pleasure to serve on this steering group with this project. And I think we have to acknowledge the leadership of the mayor in this. Celia has led the way in supporting our work, both as academics, as institutions in Wellington and the council as well, moving forward. So I'm just, the steering group or the city of Wellington received a letter from the Hundred Resilient Cities president and I'm just going to read an extract from that, which just came in the last couple of days. So this is the extract from the letter. We're delighted, we were delighted to add Wellington into the membership back in 2014. Under Mayor Wade Brown's leadership, Wellington is quickly developing an inclusive, innovative approach to the resilience strategy in a challenging timeframe. We should be proud of what has been achieved so far. As the capital city of a progressive nation, we're looking to Wellington to lead the way nationally and with other cities are already beginning to lead by example. And we lead by example and we've come to expect nothing less from the coolest little capital. So for now, congratulations on a job well done and keep up the good work. Michael Orankovich, the president of the Hundred Resilient Cities. So it is those words, I just want to thank the mayor, the council for this continuing work, but it's important that we continue this because we face many challenges. Not only do I want to work to help the people of the Wellington region, but we need to show leadership in New Zealand, but also our global contribution. And we are becoming a place where the world looks to for innovative ideas for how to manage the resilience that we face, the challenges we face. Thank you very much.
David, thank you and thank you also to Alison Cadman who's on the steering group and Bruce Pepperell who is chief executive at Remo. And the combination of scientists, community housing and regional approach shows you how well we've been working together. I'd also like to acknowledge that we are the science capital as well as the arts capital with GNS and NEEWA here. It makes life a lot easier to assess the potential acute shocks that could happen. And our own council staff, Jenny Rains and others have been instrumental in helping us understand how chronic stress is of poverty, ill health, lack of education can actually make any of those acute shocks far worse. We have got an eclectic mix of initiatives going forward. They're quite exciting. There's certainly some real smart capital ones with the augmented reality, virtual reality planning model of the city that will help look at scenarios as well as be really practically useful if and when a big disaster strikes. I'd like to acknowledge the Rockefeller Foundation. It's a very large philanthropic foundation. It's been extraordinary the way that those hundred cities have worked together at the mayoral level, at the officer level and I'd like to thank the chief, I'd like to thank the Rockefeller Foundation for making it possible to employ Mike, Mike Mendonsen, take a bow, as the chief resilience officer. And please whoever is elected as mayor, join David as co-chair of the resilient steering group going forward. I move. Do I have a seconder? I'd like to ask councillor Malcolm Sparrow to second and speak if you wish to.
Thank you. This is a very good report and I'd like to thank Mike and all the others involved for the excellent work they're doing in this area. As we know, Wellington is leading the pack in terms of emergency preparedness in both structural resilience and in community resilience. However, there is still much to do. Emergency response plans are being put in place in various suburbs across the city with the experts working with local people to compile these for their own communities. We do need to continue plugging the message as this report says that communities and individuals may well have to fend for themselves for up to seven days in the event of a major disaster striking. And that includes council playing its part in ensuring people across the city can easily acquire emergency water tanks for themselves. So thanks to all those who play an ongoing part in the important role of emergency preparedness planning. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sparrow. Do I, would anyone else like to speak to the report? Councillor Paner.
Well, of course, I'd like to add my thanks to and particularly your worship for the strong leadership that you've played over the last three years. And it's been good to work with colleagues and offices and community on infrastructure issues over the last three years. Councillor Sparrow's done a lot of the community work. I've been proud to play a part in the hard infrastructure issues that we have. And a lot of the language in this document is excellent. We're talking about community participation, making sure that we're dealing with a number of stakeholders, talking about how the arts sector can also make a contribution and that's excellent. But I would just perhaps encourage people not to rewrite history because actually these ideas are not new. There have been people warning us since the 60s about the environmental degradation that we have and will experience. And of course, earthquake preparedness has been a major issue for the city for some time and for this country, even from the 1930s when much was learned about how to prepare for an earthquake. I do note the term man-made challenges and unfortunately that's not something we can subscribe just to men, women have made their part too. But it's good to see finally that it is well ensconced that there is a human problem here, not just natural causes. And that definitely comes to play when we deal with difficult issues like transport, where people are still struggling with the idea that the way we transport ourselves is a leading cause of climate change. The tension is still in this document and I hope that it will be one day resolved. Just the last point I'd like to make, I'm very pleased to see the adaptation fund for sea level rise being adopted. I had actually argued that we needed a fund that was comparable to the Economic Development Fund. So that's excellent to see and I expect to see many millions of dollars put into that over time. The only thing I'd say, it is a very narrow focus. We also want to be dealing with mitigation as well. It is always the first priority. But look, this is excellent work, really, really good and if I'm re-elected, lucky to be enough, I very much look forward to seeing it implemented.
Thank you councillor Eagle.
Thank you, your worship. If my memory counts right, back in, back on February the 22nd, we were in here for an SPC meeting, for those of us who are on council. At that time I was working for police and I remember going back to Police National Headquarters, normal day, and then about 10 to 1 on that day was that second big earthquake. And I remember the sheer horror of looking at big screens around the police media team's building. And look, not long after that, fortunate enough, if I can use that word, to head to Christchurch and see the real impacts. And one of the things most noticeable is that people, it was all about people because people didn't, they just didn't know, there was very little that the city or the district had done in terms of preparing itself. So a very sad, you know, I mean, being there for a good week and wanting to get out of there very quickly, I thought, let's hope if, when I'm told this happens to Wellington, we are very well prepared to react positively and pit people first. Just three things for me, when I look through it, I'm really happy to see housing in there. If it takes a resilient strategy to get housing as a priority for this city and region, that's great and thank you Alison for your work there. I think we need to certainly prioritise that, whether you're at the most vulnerable end of the scale or if you, like many of us, own our private homes. Ensure that all the bits and pieces are in there to say, you know, this is what will make you cope and resilient and for those less fortunate likewise. Infrastructure's in there around the water reservoir, we know the impacts and particularly my part of the city on the southern and eastern parts of the city, if we don't get that reservoir in there at Prince Wales Park, I'd like to ensure that we continue to prioritise that and make sure that despite the call on water and being the need to be self-sufficient, anything we can do to ensure that happens would be good. And the third and most important part and councillor Sparrow raised it is around the neighbourhoods, getting neighbourhoods together and we've seen that, some of you would have had Remo out there, thanks Bruce for your work, in communities doing that, I guess, that, those workshops, that preparedness training and getting people connected with their, with their neighbours, those in their community to self-manage. Because as we're told, when you turn up to a school with that logo, there's not going to be anything there. The people who turn up are going to have to make, do with what they've got and with the training that they've had, the workshops that have been built. And when I reflect on that Christchurch experience, if that had have been in place, I think the people of Christchurch in Canterbury would have been, would have been much better prepared. We do also need to have those conversations because I think we need to, sorry, we need to go back and have some of those conversations because we're talking about making some transformational changes around, say solar panels for new builds, emergency water supplies, bike spaces and things like that, that conversation with community must keep going and that's going to be a change in the way that things happen. All in all, thank you all, particularly the panel, the team here at council for your work.
Thank you councillor Eagle. Councillor Foster.
Thanks, your worship. Number of things I want to say, first of all, thanks for the work that's been done and clearly it's work in progress and there's a lot more work to be done and that's, I guess that's the first thing. I wanted to reflect a little bit on, on the Christchurch experience and some of the lessons that we learnt from that. And I guess they're touched on here to a degree and obviously it's the need to prepare physically, so and it's the issue of trying to protect life and that's been a very high priority, but it's also the issue of trying to make sure that a city remains functional. And that clearly has not happened in certainly central Christchurch and is still not really functional, it's sort of barely, it's struggling its way back and we can't afford that. And it's one of the very strong messages that I think we need to make sure is that if we have a major event in this city, a major seismic event in the city, that we're not there six years later and still we actually don't have a central city functioning because we wouldn't have a region function if that was the case, we can't afford that. The other key message I think from Christchurch and it's kind of mentioned here, but I'm not sure it's mentioned in the way that I would like to see it mentioned, and that's number seven, which is improve insurance literacy to ensure owners are aware of the changes. But I mean, insurance has been a real challenge and getting through that process has been a massive challenge in Christchurch and I thought that in Canterbury, the immediate response to the earthquake was fantastic, but the way in which things have dragged over a long period of time subsequently has been for some people enormously painful and some people are still suffering from that. And so we need to make sure that we do have an answer that's there and it's not just people's literacy, it is the systemic literacy, if you like, so that the system actually works for people and for businesses to get them up and running because that clearly has not happened throughout Canterbury in the way that it needs to have done. It's taken far too long and it's still going. Two other things, oh, three other things I wanted to mention. One is that I think when we ultimately finish this, I think we need to tell the story of what we have been doing because as councillor Sparrow said, I mean, we are leading in this space and that's recognised across the country that we are leading in resilience preparation. We're not there yet, but we need to tell the story of what has been done. It's not like we're starting now. It's, this is work that's been going on for at least 25 years, certainly in the infrastructure space and is strengthening buildings. And that takes me to the, to those other two areas. I think a little, I would like to say a little bit more about strengthening our own infrastructure in here when it ultimately comes through and the work that has been done, the work that still needs to be done. And for example, in the, in the report, in the annual report today, which we considered, you know, for example, that statistic which says 70% of our water is now in strengthened reservoirs, those are good numbers to know about and the trajectory in which those are going and that our, you know, our riding infrastructure is being fixed, being strengthened, all those sort of things. We need to tell those stories. And there's also one of the notes here talks about, and councillor Eagle mentioned, housing, but it refers, number 13 refers to new homes being resilient. Well, actually, the reality is we kind of need the rest of the homes that are here and the rest of the buildings which are here now to be resilient. And I think we need A to tell that story and B to keep on doing that so we make sure that our building stock, the existing building stock is also resilient. So we're working very hard to do that and we need to keep on doing, keep on with that work. And the final thing, madam mayor, I just wanted to say is what's quite good about many of these things and one of the ones which particularly excited me was the last one there, which is the, is the co-benefits that come with many of these things. So it's not just that we make ourselves more resilient, whether it's to sea level rise or whether it is to seismic events, but there are also other co-benefits. And I did like the investigating daylighting of selected streams because over the years the city has buried just about every stream it's got and if we can manage to recover some of those, I think that'd be a tremendous thing to be able to do. But that's just one of the co-benefits that I see in there. So I welcome this report, but I welcome it as a step along the way to becoming more resilient city.
Councillor Marsh.
Thank you. Briefly. So whoever's going to be around this table in November, these people up here at the, at the head of the table are going to ask you to make some pretty tough decisions. Now, we're moving along this track and as some of you know, at this stage, it all seems great. However, we're going to have to make some really hard decisions that a lot of people are not going to like. So prepare yourself for it because you don't want these people doing all this work and then coming to us with the things that we have to do to save the city and keep the city being the fantastic place it is and we turn around and say, oh no, we're going to upset all those people. We can't do that. We have got to keep this thing moving forward. Otherwise, those guys up the top of the table there are going to think what a waste of time this has all been. We've got to make certain that people realise that there is a personal responsibility, that Wellingtonians have got a personal responsibility to make certain that they are prepared. And I'm sure that one of the headlines in the paper just the other day, which was about, as councillor Eagle mentioned, about schools and the civil defence centres not having lots of blankets and people with cups of Milo and that sort of thing to look after. You've got to look after yourself, you've got to prepare for yourself. And I know there's a bit of a backlash there. Things like a targeted rate possibly to mitigate against sea level rise for those properties that are along the seafront. How are we going to manage that? Now, that's going to upset people as well. So we've got to make hard decisions. One thing that I will suggest though is that until we can get a resilient power supply, just don't turn all the vehicles into electric ones because we might be a bit stuffed there. But keep this thing going. Congratulations, thank you for the work.
Thank you councillor. Did anyone else wish to speak? I just wanted to address a couple of the comments there. Yes, we are building on a lot of work, but we've also speeded up a number of those areas, in particular assessments of buildings and also the reservoirs. We've now got 38 25,000 litre reservoirs and a huge number of 200 litre ones, probably disproportionately more in Tawa than anywhere else, thanks to Malcolm's hard work there. And I think councillor Marsh, you're absolutely right that if we take this seriously, then there are going to be some challenges ahead. But what gives me heart in that is that workshops that were led were quite a wide cross-section of Wellingtonians. We have, because we were reasonably well on the path already, we've been able to complete this stage of the resilience strategy faster than most cities, but we haven't been able to complete it in order to have finished putting it in the budget. It's not all our budget, some of the actions here are other people's budgets. I'm delighted that the Chamber of Commerce is going to lead off on some of the business continuity, planning improvement. So there are other people working on this as well. And there's a little question. First of all, thank you, Mr Forbes, for a very decent coverage of this issue. It hasn't always been the case when we've been talking about resilience and preparedness. resilience and preparedness and science, but this is a very, very useful article. And I just think, anyone that's watching this on YouTube, some might have early insomnia or the rest of people here, how many of your weatherboard homes have you, councillor Young, you're safe because you live in an apartment, this is one thing you don't have to worry about, are your weatherboard homes properly attached to the piles? And if you don't know, you'd better get crawling under there or pay some nice person to crawl under there for you. Thank you. So we will now vote, it's been moved and seconded, we will now move, now vote, those in favour of the three recommendations? I declare that passed unanimously and some of you will be here to make sure that it goes into the budget and our chief executive certainly will be.
So I would now like to ask Deputy Mayor Leicester to introduce the end of triennium report.
Thank you madam mayor, it gives me great pleasure and perhaps a degree of sadness as well to introduce the aptly named end of triennium report. This report is a technical one, simply to denote the fact that we are having elections soon and there's an intervening period where we won't have councillors sitting. The official declaration of the result is likely to be 15th of October and we won't have our inaugural meeting of councillors or the newly formed council until the 26th of October 2016. In the interim, we do need the organisation to continue on and likewise, we need the Wellington to continue on. So I'll take the remainder of the report as read, as I mentioned, it's a technical report, but I do just want to mention the fact that it is with a degree of sadness that it's the end of triennium report, it's been a wonderful triennium, I've enjoyed working with all of my councillors around the table as colleagues, we haven't always agreed on everything, but it's always been a robust contest of ideas and certainly respected the job that you run and it's done, so thank you.
Thank you councillor, do I have a second, eh? Thank you councillor, any more, does anyone else wish to speak? Then we will vote. Those in favour of the recommendations, 1-2-7? Anyone against? So it's carried unanimously. I'd now like to call on councillor Ritchie to introduce the report of the Environment Committee, the Open Space Access Plan Review 2016.
Madam mayor councillors, this is actually the final report that I will be giving as the Natural Environment Portfolio Leader. It would give me a great deal of pleasure to move this, but I have some reservations which I'm going to talk about in a minute, but first of all, I want to say that we should celebrate our open spaces and the access that we have to them and the fact that they are very often, very close to our CBD and, sorry, is something wrong? I don't even know how long I've got as a mover, I have got more, I know that. So I'm going to start with the reservations very quickly. First of all, the reservations that I have in relation to the open spaces and I hope councillors will take this up in the next triennium, one, the statement that there will be shared spaces wherever they are not specified as one space or another for one use or another, with pedestrian priority, that is a problem for walkers, a huge problem if a cyclist comes at fast speed, there is no priority for pedestrians at all, they are actually in danger and it's very similar to the shared road that we have in Lower Cuba Street, where pedestrians might have priority, but if you want to tangle with a car, then your life is not worth it. The second reservation I have, which I would like to see changed, is that there is a comment, you know, the devil is in the detail in this report, in this plan, that in every suburban area, everyone should be 10 minutes walk from green space essentially. Well, actually, we have a very big suburban area in the CBD, the largest and fastest growing area, it is an urban area and it is my view and my strong view, and I know councillor Foster has endeavoured and councillor Pannett and perhaps even councillor Young have endeavoured to emphasise that there needs to be much more green space in the urban area and that it should be expressed as five minutes walking distance because of the density of living in the CBD. The final reservation, the two reservations that I have is the issue of Pole Hill Gully. I fought very hard with the help of many residents and people of the city to add Pole Hill Gully to the town belt. Pole Hill Gully is now added to the town belt as part of legislation, there is significant pressure for Pole Hill Gully to be used as a fast national, a fast downhill cycling track, mountain bike track. And again, I ask councillors who are going to be returned to look at that issue very, very carefully, it will be consulted on and it will be a very difficult consultation. It is my understanding that vans take carlo, take van loads of cycles up to the top of Pole Hill Gully and then the cyclists race down. My son is a mountain biker and I can tell you, we have some interesting discussions. The final reservation that I have is in relation to electric bikes, it's my view that electric bikes, I love them, they should be on the road. So we have here some important key initiatives for the future, the completion of the skyline track and I know that it is a disappointment for your worship and myself at least, if not others, councillor Foster, that that has not been completed, but for the developer, 800 small, you know, kilometres is all we need to complete the skyline track from Makara right through, right through to Spices, kilometres, metres? Where's, where's, where's he screwing his face up and having a discussion with somebody else, I can't quite, anyway. The other key initiatives are mostly in the Northern Ward, but not only, the Harbour Escarpment, the Great Harbour Way, which is not only in the Northern Ward, the Rural Coastal Walk, these are all very exciting new initiatives that will happen, the connection from Arabia to Makara, the east-west connection, which is from Otari over to Makara, Corori Stream and also something which I've long wanted, to ensure that we look at the paper roads in the rural area to see whether we can use them as extensions, they are public right-ofways. I do want to acknowledge some people, as this is my final presentation, I do want to thank the staff and I am going to name some, but there's always a danger, I hope I don't leave anyone out, Paul Andrews, these are the people whom I've worked most closely with, Mike Oates, Amber Bill, Mifanway, David Soul and more recently Joel DeBoer. And I presented a short speech in relation to the, you know, the opening of the Spring Festival at the Botanical Gardens and the tulip, and I, tulips, and I acknowledged what I called the gardeners. The gardeners and the workers and the volunteers in this area are absolutely amazing and I want to thank each and every one of them. I think this is the best, best department, best business unit of council, it has scarce resources, it needs political commitment to increase the funding, it needs proper, not just, you know, headlines, commitment, financial commitment to pest management and to extending the tracks.
Councillor Ritchie's being allowed a little bit of leeway as it is her final report to council.
I don't want to do a valedictory, I just want to tell you that as Portfolio Leader in the Natural Environment, I just, oop.
The amount of time available councillor?
But I'm quite happy to sit down, but I do actually think it's important that I thank the people who have been involved with this. As Portfolio Leader of the Natural Environment, I and we have worked extremely hard, mostly focusing on strategic, having a strategic focus and a policy focus. The annual report tells in detail of the busy workers and the work that they have done, but our governance and strategic role has been hugely significant in this area with a range of reviews of very important strategic plans for our natural environment, including of course particularly the town belt legislation. I thank all and I move the report as a whole.
Thank you councillor, councillor, who's second, eh? Councillor Pannett and then councillor Ritchie would like, councillor Ray, Aha Penimersa would like to speak.
Thank you madam mayor and thank you councillor Ritchie, I do support the comments that you've made and my thanks to staff as well. And look, I'd like to give a thanks to councillor Free and all of you actually, because we actually made quite a number of amendments at the committee to try and address some of the concerns that councillor Ritchie has clearly articulated and I hope that will meet the needs of everyone. Obviously, I have a huge amount of respect for the walking groups in the city, but since the debate, I've also had some discussion with the mountain bikers who are also doing some great work. So as you know, we will have e-bikes on some of our tracks, but that will be a trial of one year and then we'll see how it goes. I definitely am most proud of the amendment around giving priority to walkers except where we've got designated cycling tracks, that is very important, it is very, very clear that it is the most vulnerable users who get the highest priority. I'm proud also that we will be able to talk about our goal of enhancing the natural environment, it's not just about going through it. And the work that we will do on user conflict issues, I think will be important and I hope that with some goodwill, a sense of humour, that we will be able to get all the relevant stakeholders around the table to have some discussion about how we share all these open spaces that we absolutely love. And just lastly, I know that some frustration was expressed by some submitters that we hadn't made much progress on some of the major initiatives, so obviously I hope that that can be done in the next triennium. But look, people love our open spaces and that's fantastic, that they're so passionate and there is a lot of goodwill to, for people to work together to get the best outcomes.
Thank you councillor, I've got councillor Aha Penimersa followed by Foster followed by Free.
Thank you your worship. Look, I want to confine my comments to recognising the tenacity and the relentlessness of Helen, of councillor Ritchie with this portfolio based on, to a large extent, her many, many years inside this council. And yeah, there's times when she's driven us mad, there's times when I've driven her mad, there's times when I've driven her mad, but there's no question to me that the ultimate goal in the bigger picture, which she sought to reinforce with the assistance of our very able teams around the table. And so Helen, councillor Ritchie, I certainly wish to acknowledge and thank you for your work over many years.
Thank you councillor Foster.
I was going to leave those sort of comments for the valedictory speeches councillor Penimersa, but I'd echo what Ray's just said in terms of Helen, thank you for your work there and possibly also as a chair of some committees, it's a bit of a challenging at times, I think we all recognise that. Look, what I did want to say about this, I think this is great, but the idea of this policy originally, it was going to be a minor amendment and I think the reality was that we had a huge number of people come in with submissions and comments that were anything but minor and I think that kind of caught us out in terms of the process and if I can say this, I think where we, the devil is in the details councillor Ritchie said, in many of these things and there is a lot of detail, whether it's a management plan, whether it's an open space access plan, whether it's a, you know, dog policy, all of these things, they all have interlinks and one of the things we don't often do terribly well is that they're done in a sort of iterative, iterative fashion, you say, well, we've done this policy, so the dog policy, then we'll do the management plan for some area that the dog policy pertains to or the open space access plan pertains to in this case, and the two of them don't necessarily always fit together and I think that is, that is a bit of an ongoing challenge. But what I would say is that in terms of the process, it seems to me, and I sat with councillor Ritchie and councillor Pannett, I think councillor Morrison wasn't it, on the, on the town belt management plan, there are many of these things, there is no way that you can do that amongst, with a group of 15 people around the table, you need to go through a subcommittee process to nut out the detail and then bring it back and I think in this case, we've kind of been caught with a couple of things that still need to be resolved or perhaps there's a degree of not quite sure whether we've got them right or not, maybe the electric bike one might be one, certainly the Pole Hill Gully one, we've got some further consultation to do on that one. But can I say two things to finish off with? One is that the, I think we all recognise the lifestyle benefits and we know, the issue of lifestyles come through time and time and time again, whether it's on the election campaign, whether it's the submissions that we've had, the contribution of the track system and the open space network to that is enormous, it's incalculable, it is part of what makes Wellington, Wellington and it's part of what for a lot of people, if it wasn't there, they wouldn't be here either. And we, and I think now all councillors get that and I think most of the public get that as well. And I want to finish off with Pole Hill Gully because it's often the young-ish, well, maybe not so young in some cases, mountain bikers who come here and say, look, you know, this is why I live here, they're the IT professional types, that's the stereotype, this is why I live here, it's that access to that recreational opportunity. Now, it is that community by and large who have built many of those tracks as well. And so for example, the downhill, the mountain biking that's occurred in Pole Hill Gully, all of the tracks through Pole Hill Gully, bar one, which ironically is the one that has been suggested as being mountain bike priority, which I have a bit of a question mark over, but all the others were built largely by mountain bikers. And the whole concept there is if you build more, you actually take the mountain bikers off the same tracks that the walkers are using, so you actually reduce the conflict there. I think we are going to have to, have to deal with this and all I can say is, my plea is that we don't make this consultation bigger than being here because most of the tracks, when somebody goes and builds a track, we don't even consult about it, you know, they get on, they do the design and they go on and build the thing. But this one, we've, for some reason, this one is becoming a bit of a, a bit of a, I hope not a battleground, but a bit of a conversation that possibly is out of kilter with A) what the issues actually are and B) with the fact that it is simply allowing mountain bikers in this case to build another track, to take some of the mountain bikes away from the walkers.
Thank you councillor Foster, councillor Free.
I didn't want to say too much except actually to add my thanks to councillor Ritchie, who has been so persevering, but also actually councillor Foster, who has equally fought for, you know, things like completing the outer town belt. So look, I think it's really obvious, the contacts that I've had with residents over the selection period, how much people do value our open spaces and how much that adds to their sense of why they're in the city and why they want to stay and how people are actually increasingly engaged in a volunteer capacity and doing all sorts of amazing things, that, I grew up in this city, actually, you know, 20 or 30 years ago, I don't believe there was the same level of engagement, people went out into our parks and reserves, but they didn't actually feel that sense of ownership and that sense that they're actually able to be part of improving them and making things happen. So that's a great thing that we've, we're doing collectively, not to councillors, but actually the public and it's a partnership with a whole lot of stakeholders. But I'm looking at this map, I do think we've got some challenges, this is great, but we've got whole lots of areas of Wellington that don't have a lot of green space and when I think how appreciated something like the Leonie Gill pathway is just because we've improved what we had and made it really attractive, people are actually loving it. It's a very small example of what we can do, but I think we need to do a lot more of that, to look for the little pockets of unloved bits of green space, maybe over time add to them. You know, there's that whole question in my mind about how much more we could do in places like Johnsonville and places like, you know, the peninsula, where we've got that challenge with all that land that is sort of in transition, its ownership and its purpose. But this is a great piece of work, this is something I'm really going to be very happy to support, thank you.
Thank you councillor, I'll just say a couple of words, I'd just like the people, it's very cheeky, but the people who are wearing the walking capital t-shirts, can you just stand up so we can see them? I think, thank you very much, I just think it's wonderful, with the arts capital, with the science capital, we're all sorts of capitals, but we're certainly the walking capital as well, thank you for coming and bringing there. And I'd also like to acknowledge that walking is the most fundamental way of getting around and that many people are fortunate enough to be able to commute through our open space on the way to work and I'm thinking of people who live in Hatayai and walk to the CBD for example, people who walk along the waterfront, but also people who do choose to use two wheels rather than two feet. And just as in our transport challenges, making infrastructure that's suitable for different modes. different modes reduces conflict, we also need to think about making appropriate priority for everybody to be able to enjoy our outdoors. They talk about the daily dose of nature as being incredibly good for mental and physical health. I have to say, we might have to have a reunion of the class of 2013 along some of these tracks. And of course, some of them are going to be built like the Kaifara Forest Gartment in this financial year. So we won't have to wait too long to enjoy those walks. Councillor Ritchie, it's been a pleasure to have you in the natural portfolio and thank you for the work on the town belt and thank you for your work on this. The city's never finished, but if you actually look at the amount of trees, the amount of birdsong, the amount of enjoyment of our natural spaces, I think we can be very happy that we've done a lot for the health and wellbeing of beast, birds and two-legged people as well. Thank you. We will now have the writer reply, which we will stick to a maximum of three minutes.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. I want to take three minutes. I just want to respond to one comment in relation to Pole Hill Gully tracks. It is important that no one group colonises a particular area. If this area is expanded in relation to mountain bikes, that will essentially exclude walkers in that area. It is not correct to say that mountain bikers only made the tracks. There was a very adequate track there before, which I've walked on many times, and that was not made by mountain bikers. However, having said that, the mountain bike community, some of them have done an enormous amount of good work. They have made tracks, they have planted and they have been very careful and they do maintain. But one of my concerns with the, the development of this plan was that there were very few women who came forward and to, in the consultation process, to speak to us or even to write to us. And that was partly because the mountain bike community was largely written to and of course, most of the mountain bike community is male. So we have to make sure that we are catering for all in our city for open access to our open spaces and our tracks. And I'm not convinced that that's happened through this process. We have done an enormous amount. We have actually ensured that there are at least nine plans, very major plans that have been reviewed and four new plans. It has been a huge portfolio and a huge amount of work and huge thanks to everyone, including the councillors and the mayor and councillors and also the staff who have been involved. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now vote on recommendations one and two. Please raise your hands if you are in support. Thank you. And is there anyone against? I declare that carried unanimously. I would now like to ask councillor Leicester to... Oh, there's another one on the environment committee, how could I rush along? Councillor Panett proposed leases. Councillor Panett with the Pistol Club and the Long Hall Trust, I've got you down to introduce it. I move. Do I have a second, councillor Eagle? Do you wish to speak? Thank you. We will now, does anyone else wish to speak? Then we will now vote on recommendations one A to the Long Hall Trust and one B to the Wellington Pistol Club. Those in favour? Anyone against? I declare that those carried. And sorry councillor, Ahepini-Merza as chair of the regulatory processes committee, the road stopping along John Sims Drive.
Thank you your worship. I move and I will simply add to those words that I did thank the team at the meeting, our very last meeting, but I think tonight being our last meeting of the year, I feel very comfortable about acknowledging the tremendous work of that whole team to enable us to get our business done in the way that we did. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ahepini-Merza. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Foster, do you wish to speak? Does anyone else wish to speak? Then we will vote on the road stopping recommendations one A, B, C, D and E. Those in favour, put, raise your hands. Is there anyone against? I declare those carried unanimously. And now, I'm sorry, I was about to hurry you into it earlier councillor Leicester, deputy mayor, please, as chair of the governance finance and planning committee, please introduce the report. And there is a little error that I don't know how many people have noticed in the title of the report. We're not doing the annual plan, we're doing the annual report.
Thank you madam mayor and we'll need to tidy that up, but seeing as we've discussed this at length this morning, I won't add any further comment, I move.
Seconded by councillor Peck, chair of ARMS, do you wish to speak?
Thank you madam mayor, just very briefly, just to put on record formally, my thanks to the team that brought the report together, Andy Matthews and the finance team and the, and the writers who took all the words away and sorted it out and the audit and risk committee that went through it three times to make sure that the numbers crunched and that the words were correct and also the councillors that came along to the, to the workshop to add their tuppence worth as well. And just to reflect that it is a very strong report, it reflects a very good year for the council. And I do want to say something about the double A plus rating again, and it's a better rating than the New Zealand government's got and we should be really proud of that. And those that contributed to that result should really pat themselves on the back. And Andy, I'd really like it if you'd pass it on to your team and thanks for the, for the work that was so well done. Also, since it's the end of the triennium, again, just to put it on record, to thank our external, our external experts on the audit and risk committee, Peter Harris and Roy Tiffin, remembering also that we also had Kevin Simkins with us until his untimely death in 2015. So all in all, a good year for the, for the, for the council madam mayor and the council can feel justly proud of that result.
Thank you councillor Peck. Does anyone else wish to speak? I just want to add a couple of things. I'm really pleased with the depth and honesty of the report. There are some areas we need to work better with, there are some areas where our targets need to be more realistically set or fully funded. But focusing on the financials because we all know that through the election process there are some challenging assertions made. Our net borrowings under 400 million, nearly 20 million below budget, that borrowing is less than 82% of our annual revenue. This is like a house, a household having a property value of $570,000 on an income of about $70,000 a year with a mortgage of less than $57,000 and money in the bank of half a million. That is a pretty responsible and positive place to be. There's a lot of investment that will be happening, whether it's in the water and waste area, whether it's in transport, whether it's in economic initiatives. I'd also like to say that we set, it is called the annual report, but this is the outcome from the annual plan and from the long-term plans that have been set. We consult on the budgets, we vote on the budgets and then we delegate to staff the implementation. And there's been a little bit of noise recently about how those delegations have been exercised and I say they are fully in line with what we have voted on and agreed. Thank you councillors. Councillor Leicester, any writer reply? I have to, before anyone else wishes to speak, I'm going to invite Bead Kearney, the auditor general, to address, he's not the auditor general. Never, never rely on the notes that are passed to you. Bead Kearney, who's representing Audit New Zealand. I'd rather have Audit New Zealand here than the auditor general on the whole, I think, to address the meeting and provide his audit opinion before we vote, just in case there's something that we haven't been telling you.
Thank you madam mayor, I was, yes, heady heights for a short time. I'm really just here to confirm that we've completed our audit, I'm now in a position to issue an unmodified audit report and I will do that now unless there's any comment question.
Giving you the opportunity to ask Bead, our auditor from Audit New Zealand, any questions? There are no questions, so what I would like to do is now vote on this and then we will sign the audit. Oh, did you have a writer reply? Oh, go on councillor Leicester.
Simply to say, no, thank you Bead and thank you mayor Wey Brown for your promotion, I'm sure that's made your day. But again to our staff in terms of turning around the issues, I know there was one minor issue to be addressed through today, I simply want to say thank you to Andy and your team. An incredible amount of work goes into the annual report as does the annual plan, I think it's about a four-week period in between, you finish one plan, you start the next. Hopefully you get all your holidays packed during that period, but well done, you do an amazing job and that's reflected in this report too, so thank you.
Here, here, so let us vote, those in favour? And I declare that carried unanimously and now a no-go and sign. And Mr Matthews, who's been quite correctly commended.
Have we got, have we got to fill those pages in already? Right, so come and stand without help and Andy's where you are. We're not all getting married, we're not like.
Now, we are aiming to go into a brief, public excluded item and then, so the live streaming will stop after the vote, just in case there's dissent on the vote, and then we will continue to livestream and the public are welcome to come back in again. The item that I would like us to go into public excluded for is acquisition of land and the pursuant to the provisions of the local government official information and meetings act 1987, I move that we exclude the public from the following part of the proceedings, except for Emma Sweet, Rachel Taylor of DLA Piper. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor March, we will now vote on whether to go into public excluded or not. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Anyone against? I declare that carried unanimously and I believe we will be swift. ...
you know, who knows what will happen over the next few days. It's hard to believe that nine years have passed, and I think for me, the passage of time is best marked by the ages of the children. And when Michael Webb arrived on the doorstep on Sunday back in October 2007, Julia was just four, Johnny was six, Leo was eight, Connor was 10, Libby was 11, and Hannah was 15. And so Julia and Johnny have never known me not to be on the council. Leo and Connor and Libby probably have distant memories of a life less busy. Hannah's now in her second year practising law in Christchurch, and can remember the mayhem, which is probably why she moved to Dunedin and hasn't come back. So now we've only got shortly two at home, and so the time is sort of ripe for me to be standing for mayor. I haven't got a lot of time tonight to recap on the last nine years of being a Wellington city councillor. I've got to get through about half a million minutes of meetings in less than 10, so I will just crack on. Firstly, I wish to thank my family for the tolerance and sacrifice that you have made while I have been a councillor. There have been many times we've had to compromise time together to fit in community events, meetings, travel away, both nationally and internationally, and council work. You've all had to be pretty independent at times, and fend for yourselves from time to time. However, we've worked through these issues, and I know Ian McKinnon used to say to me, 'Don't worry, a bit of independence will do them the world of good.' Connor, you've been a great support and always there for advice and guidance. I'm so fortunate to have your support as my career takes its different twists and turns. Thank you for your ongoing love and support. Thank you to the supportive officers, and in particular, in the late, Derek and Robyn, who I've seen a lot of. Although less of Derek, actually, he's quite often last seen heading to the beach. To Kevin and your team, thank you for all the work you have done, and for your efforts in continuing to bring the economic development strategy to life. And of course, thanks to councillor colleagues who have offered support, guidance, and wisdom over the years. The time on council has been incredibly stimulating, interesting, and of course, has had its challenges. Under Kiri, we were looking at supporting the ASB Stadium, a fantastic asset for the city. I was advocating to increase the capacity of the city's aquatic facilities with an additional 50-metre pool, but I haven't won that war just yet. Fighting alongside Ian McKinnon to retain the cars in Courtney Place, much to Andy's horror, and presenting the first-ever time-in-motion study in PowerPoint presentation in debate to prove that cars were not the issues for buses getting backed up, and even aren't zoner was improved. Joining councillor Leoni Gil to be the only councillors to vote against buses in Manas Mall. Voting on the development of Site 10, nine years later, the PWC building is finally being built. The refurbishment of the Kandala Town Hall, the birth of the Corrie Events Centre Plan, it's not yet built, God. And supporting the N2A projects in the Fliva, and so many other things. But of course, the last six years have all been about leading Wellington's economic development strategy, and focusing on growing jobs and business and investment for the city. And Your Worship, I really want to thank you for giving me that opportunity, you know, to lead the portfolio, and then for the last three years to be the Chair of Economic Growth in Arts. So I found this Dominion Post article from January 2012 by Claire Rogers, and it says, 'Coolest Little Capital Reveals Very Big Plans', and that's me sitting up on the hill with the very short runway in the background. And the byline reads, 'Growth needed', um, growth and roads now. And it highlights how a direct long-haul route will strengthen the city's links with overseas business, tourism, education, and education markets. And it talks in depth about this goal and the need for a fund to support it. And the rest of the article outlines how we took leadership in this space to acknowledge the urgency of the economic situation and the criticality of the central city to Wellington's future success. It called the strategy an ambitious document through a range of initiatives, aiming to create a net 10,000 jobs across the city by 2015, increase exports by $500 million, and grow gross domestic product by 10% by 2021. And the strategy also highlighted strengthening ties with local businesses, encouraging the export of professional services such as IT, architecture and design, and firms with expertise in servicing the public sector, exploring potential for bids, business improvement districts and suburban centres to stimulate local business, investigating an innovation hub for innovative companies, research and education interests to collaborate, and a talent attraction strategy in improving the city's infrastructure, commencing a three-year investigation into whether the city needs a multimillion-dollar concert venue or conference centre to attract big events. So we're ticking a lot of these things off the list, and the city is feeling great. We've committed to our convention centre and film museum, just about, it will be built before Auckland, Christchurch and Queensland.
Councillor, this is not a campaign meeting, let's just remember that.
No, no, I know that. We've welcomed our first long-haul flight to Singapore, you know, by Singapore Air, thanks to the Destination Wellington Fund. We have in principle supported the airport extension and co-funded the resource consent. We've set up the tech hub, and we've got an ICT grad school. And of course, we'll have Ta'ara Haukun in the Cuba quarter with a thousand new students. We've set up Destination Wellington and the Regional Economic Development Agency to grow business, talent attraction, and tourism in the region. And through the City Growth Fund, we've supported many fantastic initiatives, activities, and events that have seen our hotels full and a very vibrant city. And we are getting great results, record numbers of visitors by plane and ship, record numbers of people, of visitor nights, Lampdun Quay's looking amazing, we've now got David Jones, we've got house prices going up, $500 million worth of new construction in the city, we've reached our target of the 10,000 new jobs, we've got a commercial property boom. No, no, but don't listen to me, don't listen to me, listen to the Huffington Post, 'Fog's Guide to the Coolest City in the World', the BBC, we're one of 2015's hottest cities, so, and the PM even says we're booming and flying. So we've got a great growth story to tell, but we need to tell it. So despite the assertions that some have made about the council, and about the staff and councillors, I would like to say that in my nine years, this is a very recent and sad accusation. Despite the efforts of one very short-term staff member to derail the governance and organisation publicly, I think the professionalism and efforts of the whole have meant we have been able to deliver across a wide range of areas, and not just on the economic development programme, but I'm really proud of that. I just want to wish all my councillor colleagues all the very best of luck with the election. And for those of you who are leaving, Ray, you know, you've done a wonderful job for so many years leading the arts portfolio, you've made a huge contribution, and you'll really be missed. Helen, Mark, and Celia, all the very best. So yeah, I just really want to thank everyone again for their support on the big issues and the wonderful contribution that they've made, and I'm looking forward to making my actual valedictory speech on some other date in the future.
Thank you, councillor. Who would like to go next? Councillor Leicester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do just want to reflect on my success here as councillor on council as well. It's been the most wonderful job I have ever had the pleasure to experience. I don't know if I'll have one like this in the future, and whatever happens on October the 8th, I just want to say, it has really been enjoyable. I came on to council really not knowing what to expect. I came on with councillors Eagle and councillor Marsh, we're sort of thrown in from the deep end, but it has been a tremendous time, and I have deep admiration and respect for every councillor, in fact, every candidate that runs, because it takes a certain kind of, a certain kind of person, and, but you aren't really putting yourself out there, and not everybody's prepared to do it, so I have that deep admiration and respect, and more so for those that do get elected, because the community is not easily fooled. They elect, I think, for the most part, their best person, or the person who's run the best campaign, or who has worked the hardest. So congratulations to you all here, you've been here for a long time, many of you, and I think you do an exceptional job, and that's why you continue to get re-elected. I just want to reflect as well upon the councillors that are definitely leaving. I'll start with councillor Peck, here on my right, a councillor colleague. And, I mean, I've known Mark, actually, since I was very young. He didn't know me, but I knew him, he was my local MP down in the cargo. And I played football with his son, Chris, and I remember meeting Chris, and, oh, Chris Peck, oh, hang on, you're the son of the famous MP, Mark Peck. And I was sort of expecting when Mark first came to pick up Chris from football practice, that, you know, he'd be the six-foot-tall giant with muscles on muscles, nostrils flaring, I'd heard about his antics in Parliament, and, you know, and the feisty debates and everything else, and I was expecting a much grander man in stature. So when he turned up, he was slightly more diminutive.
What you see is what you get.
However, he did impress me nonetheless, and back then, I mean, Mark had an incredibly strong reputation in the cargo. He did a really good job on behalf of the local community, and I really appreciated the job that he did. And I will never forget, Mark, and it was, when I first met him up here, I was, to be honest, slightly nervous, when he came in for his first running for council, because, again, I had known him since I was quite young. And I will never forget him as a colleague, but also because of the fact that, and this is in jest, Mark did manage while he was there as a local MP in government as well to close the two schools that I went to. So Elston Lee Primary School, when I go and visit now, is boarded up in graffiti, likewise, tweets me on Teneida, has become Southland Girls' High School. So, but I will never forget you, Mark. Likewise, with Ray, and a quick story with Ray, I think the highlight of the triennium, our last triennium, was the waka that had been otherwise appropriated or misappropriated, I guess, by Waifeta and taking it to the Maori, and we were trying to get our waka back, and they were less than keen to give it back at the time. And Ray with a gleam in his eye, because he was on the waterfront board previously, and I was on it then, so I'd been involved in these discussions around the waka, he came up with a gleam in his eyes, like, honestly, we'll put together a mission, we'll head out there tonight, we'll get it under cover of dark. And I thought he was kidding. And then it dawned on me about a minute or two later, he wasn't. And just when we thought we'd get together a sort of reconnaissance team and head on out there, no, no, we didn't, we decided it would be wiser not to. But I'll never forget that, because I think it sort of says to the character of Ray as well, he's a bit of a rascal, I'm sure he got up to a few, a few activities out there in Apahata as a young man, but he, I've got enormous respect for you, Ray, you've done a tremendous job on behalf of the arts. You will, you will be missed, and you won't be forgotten, because the art sector won't forget the contribution you've made. You're also a bit of a comrade around this table, you've, you've, this has been your financial, oh, sorry, your final triennium, I know you've really stepped up into the role too, because you wanted to go out on a real high, and I think you've done that, so well done. And to Celia, Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity for me to be your deputy mayor as well, I've really enjoyed it. I do want to reflect upon the first time I met you, I was actually leading up to 2010 campaign, I met with most of the councillors going around just to find out what the job was going to be like. And I remember distinctly, it was about, you turned up about 15 minutes late, slightly sweaty, because you'd ridden your bike there, still wearing your helmet, took your helmet off, the hair was all messy. I think you came along, you came to give me one of your cards, you had a whole handbag of them though, and promptly all of the cards fell onto the table. And, and then, and we had a really good discussion, but I did think at the time, who on earth, that's Celia Wade Brown? And as it turned out, it was our next mayor. You've had, you have the most integrity and respect for the institution, I think, of anybody around this table. You have been stateswoman in your entire time as mayor, except that that's one article a little bit later on in the piece, which I don't think will be a lasting reflection. You've, again, you've got the biggest heart, you've served this community in Wellington for the last 20 years, I think you've done an incredible job of doing that, and you have changed the city in your own special way. You've had a focus on environmental issues, on green issues, on resilience, and I think you've really touched Wellingtonians, and you have a lasting effect on the city as well. I just do want to again talk about your integrity, no one could ever question that, and your will to do a good job on behalf of the city. Thank you all for your service, and it's been great to serve with you, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Leicester. Fortunately, I've got the last word. Anyone else? Councillor Pannett.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, well, first of all, I would like to thank the officers I've worked with over the last three years, and you all, of course, but I'm so confident of being returned next Saturday that I'm not going to talk about myself or make an election speech, I actually just want to focus on three of you in particular, and because I think that's the most important thing to do. So, Mayor Wade Brown, you'll remember, we met in 2002, when we were both involved in the Greens, trying to, trying to get yourself elected and Sue Kedchley. And you've been a good friend, and to the whole family, and it's much appreciated. And in fact, I'll just remind you, Ellen said you're supposed to be taking the kids one weekend, so hopefully that will be very soon. So it is, it is very much appreciated. Celia brings little gifts for the children, and, you know, when she's come back from overseas, and that's been lovely. I'd like to echo the comments of councillor Leicester, you do have an enormous amount of integrity, and that is the most important thing in a politician, from my point of view. And of course, history will put you down as the person who really brought green issues to the table for the first time in Wellington as the mayor, and you will not be forgotten for that reason. And to those who said that we haven't done much over the last three years, well, councillor Coghlan, of course, done an excellent job of telling us some of the things that have been done, actually, we've done heaps, and, and some of those are the big legacy projects that mayors like to reflect on. So things like the tech hub and the convention centre are things that you can lay claim to, whether they turn out to be good or not, of course, history will judge. And the runway extension, we won't talk about that, because that probably won't be happening. But it is, it has been great to work with you since 2002, and obviously, our friendship will continue, so we will see much of each other after the next Saturday. Councillor Ahepini Mercer, this is the man that cares more about dogs than children, this is, he, he'll never ask you about your children, but he'll always ask you about your dogs, and that is, of course, been one of the things that I've most valued, my comrade and arms, that we have worked on dog issues now since 2009, and that has been fantastic. And of course, I'd like to echo the words of councillor Leicester, your leadership in the arts space has been magnificent, and people have appreciated that work. The budget bids that you got through, even in the last triennium, are a real legacy, and you have been absolutely insistent and reminded us that we have to protect our status as the arts capital, and that is right. Councillor Peck, I was just remembering, I think you used a word in one of your first speeches that we didn't understand, so you might want to tell us what cant is. Still not quite sure, but anyway, I'm sure you can enlighten us. Look, it's been such a pleasure having you around the table, you know, like, you've got a lovely set of humour, and, you know, you've been supportive, and I will miss the fact, you brought your parliamentary experience, and that was actually very, very helpful. So do very much miss you, and we'll come and have a coffee at your cafe at some point. Now, of course, it, it might be bad luck to talk about some of the other colleagues, but I will just briefly, okay, just because, but I'm sure, you know, it is in the voters' hands. Councillor Coghlan, actually, you are the person I've known second longest around this council table, and councillor Coghlan, the thing I'll say about her is she is a magnificent mother, she is so good. I remember we had a very stressful conversation one time, and she was, and we were, it was just on a campaign we were working on, and all her children were in the background, and she stayed absolutely calm. It was, yeah, you've been, you're a fantastic family person, and while we don't agree on much, you have always been constructive and professional, and it's been good to continue that working relationship, so of course, I wish you the best of luck. Councillor Ritchie, it is you, actually, of anyone amongst, around this table that I agree with most, you know, most politically, and so I am very grateful for your strong advocacy on environmental and social justice issues over many years now. I know we've joked about the longevity, but it is appreciated, and you have shown enormous personal resilience, and having many more challenges than most of us, and I'd like to honour you for that. And the work that you have done to protect our, our natural environment is wonderful. Does anyone else want me to, oh, no, I think you'll probably all be returning, so I think I'll leave it there, and it has been a pleasure to work with you and look forward to continuing that.
Thank you, councillor Pannett. It's actually not compulsory to speak, but I do have councillor Foster.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And it, I mean, it is a tradition for, as I reminded Chris again, it is a tradition for elected members to speak about each other and those ones who are either retiring or likely to retire, and it's been a tradition for our city as long as I've been on council, and I imagine before that. It's usually a tradition to speak about others, though, Joe, rather than yourself. Look, so I just wanted to reflect on, on some who are leaving and some who inevitably we're going to have to lose, because the, you know, if only one person's going to become mayor, we have three people at least, two of whom have to go, and we don't know which person's going to be here as mayor on, after October the 8th. So I guess the thing is to reflect that, you know, this is the, essentially, this is possibly the last time that this group of 15 will be together, it's almost the Macbeth, you know, when shall we 15 meet again? But I just want to reflect, first of all, I'm going to start with, with, I'll start with Helen, because I kind of already mentioned that, but what will happen at the end of this term, I just did the calculation, if I've got Ray, it's 14 years you've been on council? Sixty-six. it's fourteen years you've been on council? Sixteen? Oh god, it's even worse than that then, isn't it? Okay, so eighty, eighty-one years of experience potentially walks out the door after this, and we might have as little as sixty left. So more than, so the likelihood is that more than half the experience of council in terms of years of longevity walks out the door at the end of this meeting. In fact, that's almost an inevitability, that that's going to happen. So I think we should reflect that what we lose is a lot of experience and a lot of people who've contributed a lot to this city and to making a difference in this city, because that's what this job is all about. It's about making a difference in this city. So I'm going to start with Helen, and just say, Helen, thank you for your passion for the areas that you, we often disagree on some of these things, but your passion for the areas that you support, particularly in the natural environment, which is the area we generally do agree on. And I really appreciate that, and appreciate your hard work, because most of the time our hands go up at the same time in favour of those things. I have to say, as a chair of a committee, you have been the most helpful, in your own mind, member of any of the, of any of the, those around, yeah, well, we know, we really appreciate your help and your knowledge of stand, deep knowledge of standing orders, it's been most valued by all of us. Justin, Joe, look, thank you both for your immense positivity and the, what you've done between you. I was going to, I just, well, if I'd had more time, I'd have looked back on diaries and things like that, but I actually found that when I first met you, Justin, it was actually going up to your place, and I think Madeline was one week old. And I thought, you know, I've got to find out who this guy was, you know, so I thought, well, he plays football on the border capital football, this sounds pretty good, actually, I like the sound of this. And I was just interested to reflect the two things I came away with in terms of where your policy positions were, were tunnels and constant venues, and I thought, that's more like Joe. So I thought that was very interesting to note that down. But, look, thank you, it's been, whatever happens on Saturday, it's been an absolute pleasure working with both of you, and also it's been a pleasure going on the campaign trail with both of you as well, because I think it's been really good to have essentially a positive team of people who've been able to go around and say what has been achieved, because an enormous amount has been achieved in this city, while perhaps we don't get that collective credit for it, but over the last, over the six years and then the nine years that you've been involved in council, thirty years, I can't speak for all of those, Helen, but the time you've been on council, a lot has been achieved and a lot has changed, so I really thank you both for that. Mark, I wanted to say a few words to you, because as Ayana said, you know, when you came on, it was a bit of a firebrand coming on council, there's a bit of anger, I think, there, frustration, because I can remember what you said, you know, you came on there and this, and it was council had dug up the streets outside your cafe, and you were really annoyed with the way in which they dealt with it. But it was that debate that we had about the living wage, and it was kant was the word you used, and I was thinking, there must be something wrong with that word, but I didn't know what it meant, but I had to go and actually look it up, and I don't think I had the computer with me to go and do it at the same, or to go and have a look at it, but it would have been point of order, for sure, for sure, these days, going to know exactly what it means, so, yeah, it means hypocrisy, so you can't really say that. It's most unparliamentary, if nothing else, Mr Peck. Yeah, yeah, well, very good, very good. But look, if I can say the two things that I was really impressed with and really enjoyed getting to know you and working with you. One was the, that little bike stand that we did up at the top of Cuba Street, and the way in which you'd responded to your local retail community, and the wonderful way you went and just introduced yourself, said who you were, and, you know, I was just going, oh, I'm very impressed by the way in which you did that. That's obviously twelve years of parliamentary experience, taught you something about how to do those sort of things, and of course, the bike stands are there, so that's fantastic. But the other one I wanted to reflect on was, and I really appreciated, was sitting with you on the Plan Change eighty-one with Dave McMahon for the Gordon Wilson building, because that was, you know, it was quite intense, and a lot of detail, a lot of information there, and I certainly appreciated the collaborative way in which we worked together on that, so, no, thank you very much for that. Ray, just want to say, we've clashed towards many times, and some of the things that you said this triennium have been fairly bruising at times, and I kind of thought, you know, it might have been better not to say them, but can I just say, look, I did appreciate, the thing I, the thing which I do appreciate, you know what I mean, don't you? Yeah, you know what I mean. So I'll leave that there. But I just want to say, I appreciate it, your work in the arts and culture area has been, you know, it's been immense, and you will leave an enormous hole in that area in particular. I certainly appreciated the other day going up and you showing me around Toipaniki and talking about arts issues and cultural issues, because I think your knowledge, your passion for that area is going to be, you know, it's really going to be a huge loss to council. And if I reflect back further also, I think, you know, thank you too for your work in the area of the natural environment, and, you know, around the south coast there looking after the little penguins, I think it's, you know, it's been, the breadth of your interests has been, has been great, and I've really appreciated that, so thank you very much for all you've done, and Justin's already reflected on your contributions, our kamato in many cases as well, so thank you for that. Your worship, look, nineteen years that you've been on either a councillor or mayor, and I just want to say thank you, certainly as, well, as a councillor, I regard you very much as a friend, and really appreciate it, there's so many things that we work together on over that long, long period of time, particularly in the areas of the natural environment and sustainability, and I think there is an enormous amount to be proud of in this city, because we are, we are a leader in natural and environmental restoration, and that we weren't that, if you go back that twenty years when you started, we weren't that, and also in sustainable transport. And some of that has been very, very hard work, but I think your hand has always gone up to support, whether it's bus priority, or whether it's cycling, or, you know, walking, and particularly as the founder, president, chair of Living Streets Al Tera, so I think you've been very, very consistent in all of those things, and I think you can be, be very proud of it. And also, if I might say too, the, in the area of resilience, I think you've been an immense leader in that area too. And the one other thing I did want to mention, your worship, is the, is the area, I think, one of the things I think has been a great strength, languages obviously is a passion for you, and I know that you're going to go and do some further study in the Chinese language, but I think you've represented us immensely well across a range of, a range of cultures and a range of languages, and I've always been impressed when you've been able to stand up there and greet, not in one language, but in two or three sometimes, the audience as appropriate, and I think that's been absolutely marvellous. And while I've never gone overseas with you, as I say, for example, Joe has, that I'm sure that you've represented us immensely well internationally as well, and the fact that you've been asked to go and represent the city on several occasions, whether it's, I think, in Italy or in Asia, has been, obviously, is a tribute to you as well. So it's been an absolute pleasure working with you over those years, Madam Mayor, and wish you all the well, well, in fact, wish all of you all the best for what is to come.
Thank you. Councillor Free.
Just very quickly, I won't presume to think who might be here or not here, so I'm just going to say a quick word to the three who are definitely going, and mainly I really want to say something to you, Celia. Celia, of course, was Southern Ward councillor when I lived in Island Bay. We met probably first, actually, when our sons played soccer together, so I knew Celia as a soccer mum, enthusiastic cyclist, but also someone who was incredibly responsive to local issues. And I remember when Celia, we had a problem with some of our sewage pipes, and it may sound mundane, but when you've got a problem with old sewer pipes on your property, it's actually a problem, and Celia just actually took responsibility for making sure that that got dealt to. I really, really appreciated it, and I know that you have done the same for many, many others in our suburb. And the fact that you were just re-elected and re-elected time and time again speaks to that. But as mayor, I've always had the greatest admiration for you, and I agree with others who have said that, you know, I think we'll be seeing your legacy for many years to come. And it won't be in the built, the big buildings or monuments, although we'll have those as well. It'll actually be in the way in which you've fostered a complete change of attitude and approach in our city, and the things that you have done, Celia, you know, in terms of just encouraging us to be very accepting of the diversity in the city, of that enabling approach that's brought all those volunteers on board, the way that you've, you know, spoken to all the cycling, the mountain biking, the walking, and all those diverse communities that we have. You really have had an approach which I think has seen a huge shift in the way of doing things, and will stand us in very, very good stead in the future. I won't say much more, it's all been said about your integrity and honesty, but I've really appreciated that, your encouragement to all of us individually, the way you've tried to take on board what we wanted to achieve, and you've always had that open door. Ray, your wisdom, I've appreciated that on many times. We've had little ward problems, and when they've been the sort that sort of takes a bit of intuition about how best to go about bringing people together or getting past a little hurdle, you have been the one that I've gone to for advice on that, and it's always been good advice. And in a similar vein, actually, Mark, I've appreciated your wisdom, you've given me some very sage little nuggets of advice, which I'll keep and hang on to, just about, you know, the way to sort of keep the powder dry, sometimes the less is more, and, you know, just taking that precautionary approach when it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ritchie, and then councillor Marsh.
Kia ora koutou katoa, ina mana ina reo, ana iwiu tumatu. Meina rangatira ma, tena koutou, tena koutou, tena tato katoa. Madam Mayor, councillors, when I started on council, for six months I said nothing. I said nothing because I was really scared. I was really scared that the media would write it down, and I'm still scared.
Is that why you're writing it down?
So we can use...
I started council as a young mother, with a, with a wonderful husband. We lived in a rural existence, without sewage reticulation, without water reticulation, and we recycled our rubbish without any, any collection. At that time, as a new councillor, I had one five-year-old and one four-year-old, and at the same time, I was employed, I had one a studentship, and I was employed in the public sector as a psychologist, doing both jobs. Today, I live a very different life. Today, of course, is a very momentous day for me, maybe it's also a momentous day for you as well. It is my last day as a city councillor. Whoever dreamt, at least of all myself, that I would become, I don't know how it's happened, one of the longest-serving councillors in the country, apparently, thanks to, well, we won't say who, and the first woman deputy mayor of this city. In my years, I have tried to make a difference, always underpinned by social and environmental justice. In the thirty years that I have been on this council, I have, and not all continues, I have had multiple roles, multiple jobs, multiple work, multiple occupations, sometimes five at the same time, in concurrent with my council work. I've always taken political risks, I've always looked at the big picture, and actually, I detest looking at the detail. I detest all those yellow lines and those traffic resolutions, and the Island Bay cycle way. But today, you know, I've never been here just for me, that's never been my driver. And sometimes I took a risk, particularly with the More Point campaign, where I thought, there's no way in the wide world that the ratepayers are going to want to pay for this, but I did it because I did not think that our city's sewage, that starts with S-H, should be on our beaches. All of our sewage was drained onto our beaches next to Ray's house, or nearly. So I am very proud today that I have been able to lead, and I won't go through the thirty years, obviously, but I've been able to lead the nuclear weapon-free Wellington. I've made sure, in the meantime, that the town hall is still there, we're on to the second or third round of that, by moving a motion that it not be demolished, when it was intended to be demolished in the early eighties. I'm very proud that I have been actively involved in reinvigorating the Johnsonville Town Centre. I am very pleased that I could lead the civic centre project, and I hope that the next council will maintain that area. That is the heart of Wellington, it is the heart of our civic life, and it is the heart of the capital. And finally, of course, the natural environment portfolio and the town belt legislation, which will see our town belt protected and enhanced probably for a hundred years. So today, I welcome my premature liberation from this council, only to return in one and a half weeks' time, when I hope to lead from the front instead of from the back, to lead an effective council into the future, sorry. No, 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 it's not true. I apologise on behalf of Joe, because I hope to lead from the front seat, not from the back, an effective council into the future, and to celebrate the coolest little capital that I have been very privileged to create. I want to thank each of you in this room, but I also want to thank those who have come before. There have been many councillors, many mayors, whom I've seen and known and understand who did well, who did not so well. I want to thank the people of Wellington, and the city, and the country. I thank them and you all for the wonderful opportunity I have had as a councillor to serve you and to serve you all. I salute you, but I want to make some comment about just a few. Mark, first of all, those of you who are definitely leaving, and those of you who are likely to leave, maybe, who knows. Mark, as I, he recalled, I actually hardly recall, but Mark and I apparently, apparently, were on the first campaign that, when I was elected in 1977, and Mark was not. I had hardly remembered that, but he reminded me of that. I just want to thank you, Mark, for being the chief audit monitor of this council. I think you've done that job well. Ray joined the sewage campaign very soon after it was initiated. Ray, I just want to say that some of us around this table can share secrets, can share stories. I want to thank you for the help you gave during Peter's long illness, which was fantastic, and also for, obviously, leading in arts and culture and the penguins. Celia, I want to thank you for leading this city for six years, no mean task. Joe and Justin, I want to thank you, and actually, Nikita was also part of this, I suppose, but in a different category again, and so's Andy, but I want to thank you for the great campaign that we've had. It's really rather bizarre, you know, we should all be mayor. I would quite like to be mayor, but I'm quite happy to share with, you know, because we've developed this really strange, strange collegiality, which I think actually will last in one way or another. And I want to also thank you both, all of you, for the contribution that you've made. And finally, Ayana, who's just made some comments. I just want to say, Ayana, you've turned out, you know, you've turned out quite well.
Quite well.
Because one of the jobs that I had, she knows this, one of the jobs that I had, which was actually just prior to my being on council, was that I taught her parents how to bring her up. Kia ora koutou katoa. It's true.
Thank you, thank you. I think the more secrets that are revealed tonight, the more interesting it will be. Councillor Marsh.
I haven't got your secrets. Mark, let's start with you, and as perhaps one of your mentors, Labour Party mentors might say, hekura tina katoa, tina katoa, katoa. Mr Peck, I'd like to thank you for the wonderful effort and time that you have put into the Audit and Risk Committee. You've been marvellous, absolutely fantastic. But you seriously have. Audit and Risk Committee, you have led it, and you have set a wonderful example for everybody on that committee. It's quiet, it's unromantic, it's not a sexy committee, that's why I got put on it as well. But you have done such a fabulous job, so thank you very much. And councillor Eagle kicked me then and said, don't take too long, he's getting hungry. Celia, I remember first meeting you, I think it was Dory Leslie Park, and it was leading up to the election, and I was told to go and plant some cabbage trees and things there, it was a good thing to do if you wanted to be a councillor, so I was there, and you were there as well, and I was saying, oh god, we have a gardener at home that does this, but you were out there digging the holes, and I'd followed your example, and I thought, what a neat person, what a great person. And then I got into council, and you invited us up to your place, and I thought, well, that's a little bit strange, he's got chicken that perch in trees. What sort of mayor is this? But then I could see that, you know, you were forming your plan for the city, and you launched that, that policy, that strategy, and I know you did name it, Towards Twenty Forty, the Smart Green Capital. And, look, here is this naive new councillor who thought, "We can't have green in there", so moved an amendment to take the word green out, because I thought it was too politically orientated. It took me a while to get out the deep freeze, but after a while, after a while, the mayor thought to me again, and I was at a function with Chris Finlayson, he said, "How do you find Celia?" And I said, "Look, I tell you what, she's a really good person. We don't agree on everything, but her heart is in the right place. She's a good person." But that's democracy. We don't agree about everything, but we still have to get on, we've got to move forward." And somebody actually asked that at one of our election meetings, and that's what it is. They hear the noise, they see the headlines, but, you know, I mean, we don't all love each other like brothers and sisters, we don't all agree, but we do manage to get on and keep this city moving. And Celia, you've done it for the past six years, thank you very much indeed. Now, Ray.
Who?
Ray. Ray, I just need to remind Ray that he's still a councillor until the results are announced. So I'd just like to encourage all residents in the East Ward. Please, if you need advice, assistance and guidance and ways of the Wellington City Council, Ray is still here. Please email or phone him with any of those questions. Now, before I became a councillor, I remember meeting Ray, I was biking around the peninsula, just round past Moa Point, and it was about sort of seven o'clock in the morning, and this bald head popped up out of the bushes at the side of the road, I nearly fell off the bike, and there was Ray, and I stopped, I said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "I'm collecting rubbish." And this was Ray out there cleaning up the south coast. And I thought, "What a great example to set." In fact, it was probably Ray getting the small penguins that had been run over, popping them in the bag, and then inviting me round for Penguin Pie a little bit later on. He cares for the environment. And, you know, Moa Point Treatment Plant, I know Helen, you're involved in that, but this is testament to the way Ray cares about the environment. So tomorrow morning, when you go into the small room, say, "Thank you, Ray." Since I've been here, Ray and the arts capital have really been joined at the hip. But it hasn't been, you know, art for art's sake with Ray. Ray has recognised that the arts capital is one of the core things that bring people to this city. It is of such economic importance. And when people come along and say, "Oh, you know, these wankers putting up paintings and statues everywhere," they're just so wrong, because this is what brings people here, this is what makes this city so livable. Just thank you very much, Ray, for that. That economic value is amazing. And Ray has also been a friend. I remember coming in here, sitting down, thinking, "Okay, we're here, what do we do next?" And, you know, Ray would just sort of say, "Okay, this is what you're doing, put your hand up now."
True, true.
And also, you know, the very difficult politics of the Mano Fenua. And, I mean, being able to guide me and other councillors through this and explain what is going on and the issues involved. Ray, thank you very much for that. Ngā manaki tanga, ka kita ana.
Kura, I think we will now move to the retiring elected members. I'd like to start with councillor Peck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you for all the nice comments. As David Longy said, "I've changed my mind." Give me a nomination form and I'm in. And, yes, I've never seen Geoffrey Palmer look so shocked in his life as when he did that. Look, thank you for that. I'm going to do the thank yous upfront. I recently had to make a speech at my brother's funeral, and doing this thank yous, I cracked up, so I'm going to do them first, all right? Because then I can probably dwell on my speech. So let's have a look. I wrote these down, just in case I forget them. So it seems to be traditional, but it is heartfelt. I want to thank my family. Told you, it happens. Jim Sutton told me it's something to do with the frontal lobe, and I believe him. I want to thank my family for being so tolerant of me during my years in public life. And I use the word tolerant advisedly because it's okay for us politicians. We go in and we expect to take the brickbats. And, you know, with your family too, Joe, you'll know this, the family wear it, they get it, and they can't fight back. We can as politicians, we've got the skills and we know how to use them, but the families get hurt. So I'm proud of them, I want to thank them. Damnedness. Also to my wife Margaret. Margaret's been my staunchest supporter and my confidante, and she told me to take it out of the speech, but I'm going to say it anyway. I let her answer the phone at home, because as a politician, sometimes you don't want to talk to people. And she's really, really good at saying, "I'm terribly sorry, Mark's got a meeting. I'm actually having my dinner." Or watching Pointless or something, and she saved me many a phone call I didn't want. And politicians also have to manage their lives, and you can't deal with every problem that comes your way. And, you know, you just burn out, you simply burn out. And so there's a need to have somebody around that understands. And Margaret, I want to thank you for that. That's that one. Secondly, I want to thank my Labour family for supporting me all these years. They've had to support me through some very difficult times, and they've never flinched. And I want to thank them for that. And if people want to know why we have party politics and why we're members of political parties, it's tribal. And with me, it's tribal. And, sorry, I'm not going to change my stripes, so I think you've got a pretty good idea how I voted, but we'll talk more about that a little later. I certainly want to thank the two people that helped me significantly during my campaign in 2013. Neither of them are in New Zealand now, one's overrunning the Australian Labour Party, Patrick Layland, and the other's gone back to the United States to help Hillary Clinton become the first woman president, and that's Andrew Robinson. And they were superb organisers. You might have noticed in 2013, I didn't manage to get one sign out in Lampton, nobody would take them. A, people didn't know me, B, nobody wanted their fences ruined. And these guys managed to organise a campaign where we managed to get significant level of vote without any signage up. And so thank you to them. I also want to recognise the two people that nominated me to serve on the Wellington City Council. One's going to come as a bit of a shock. Sir Michael Fowler nominated me for city council. And going back to 77, Helene, I took part in a couple of debates with Michael Fowler out in Island Bay Pool. And Fowler and I actually struck up quite a good relationship in those days. I was a firebrand, I had a lot more hair, and very little... Yeah, I think I was. And very little class, but Michael Fowler and I just seemed to hit it off. And so I want to thank him. And also, I want to thank Murray Pillar, and this is not an advertisement, but he runs a really, really good bookshop and art gallery in Thordons, so get up there. And Murray, I'm not going to mention it by name, because otherwise you'll have to, I'll be told off, it'll be... Millwood Galleries, yeah, absolutely. Go and see Murray, he's a good guy. Again, how many times have I said this, Andy? But to you and your team, you're the officers I've worked closest with? Thank you, I really appreciate your advice and assistance. I came to see you when I became a councillor, and I said, "What reading should I do?", and you gave me a whole bunch of annual reports. And I thought, "That's not the reading I want to do. I want to do some reading on local government finances." I think you saw the danger in that, and you bogged me down with all these dusty old financial reports going back to the year dot. Well, they're still keeping my door closed, so thank you for that. Haven't opened the covers, but I think I learnt a little bit about local government finances in my time here. And you and your team, I want to certainly thank you, thank you guys for that. Also, to Geoff McRobey, who's not with us tonight, but Geoff has been a huge support. I met with him regularly. Nikao's now going to miss out on a few cappuccinos and hot chocolates, because we're not going over there anymore, Geoff. But thank you very much for the efforts you put in to assist me with the efforts I needed to do to keep an eye on the stuff around risk, health and safety, IT and things of that ilk. Also to Nicola Brown and Debra from the Health and Safety Team, thank you very much indeed. To all of you in Democratic Services, thank you, thank you. I've really appreciated the support and assistance I've got, and you've all had a great sense of humour, particularly when I go bowling and looking for talava or looking for anybody. It doesn't matter who's there, I managed to get the help and assistance I need, and I just want to, I want to thank you for that. I'm going to talk about my colleagues a little later on. Justin. Yes, you did play football with Chris. Chris has got a Chatham Cup gold medal. Where's yours? Sorry, mate, didn't mean to bring that up, but what you highlighted, the issue of closing schools in electorate like in Immaculate is something that actually is, I've got to tell you, as the MP for Immaculate, to close schools in Immaculate takes an enormous amount of courage. And I say courage because actually it was the right thing to do. And I like it when Helene said that she's not here for herself. You get into politics to do the right thing. And how the heck could we actually countenance the fact that in Auckland, kids, forty people in a class going to school, when within a kilometre and a half, there were three schools with less than a hundred people in it? How can you countenance that? And I came across a woman in Immaculate, I decided that having made this decision, having taken the decision that had to be taken, I wasn't even the minister, just a local member, I had to weigh the decision effectively, but I never, ever scabbed on it. I stuck with the decision because it was right. And I came across this woman in Immaculate who said to me, "You're not standing again." She said, "That's an absolute travesty. I was looking forward to voting against you, and now I can't." And she was so angry. But it's the right thing to do. The sad thing is, when you do that sort of thing, there are downside consequences, and your description of them is absolutely correct. The buildings are still closed and they're full of graffiti. And if I have one regret in my political life, is that having had to take that decision, I was unable to influence the result of what happened to those properties. I've enjoyed being a city councillor. It's been an absolute privilege. And I admit that when I first came in here, I was a little green, but I did know a few words to use. The very first speech I made in here was to try and make sure we had many more council meetings than we were going to have. I got approached by the mayor who said, "You could have talked to me about this first." "No, you don't talk about these things first, we have debate around them." So my very first speech in this place was controversial, and I don't think I changed too much along the way, quietened down a little bit towards the end of time, but there's a whole bunch of reasons for that. But I've really, really enjoyed being a city councillor. And I'd say to anybody that aspires to get into civic life, do it, do it. Many are called, but few are chosen, but do it. If you've got the wish to get involved, get stuck in and have a crack. One of the things I did learn, though, is that most of the money gets spent on the guts of the city, the infrastructure, that's where it goes, all right? People don't get terribly excited about that, but as I said this morning, when you turn on the tap, or you drive on the road, or you flush your toilet, that's all coming from the council. But the rest of what... Well, no, okay. But the rest, the rest of what happens in Wellington is what gives it its heart, and Ray in particular. I want to acknowledge your efforts in the art area, mate, because when you look at what happens around Wellington, every Saturday, well, actually, not just any Saturday, just about every day of the week or sometime during the week, something is happening. And the city council is involved either as a partner or as the initiator of the event. Now, this is a city that is so vibrant, so busy and so doing things. And this is what gives a city its heart, for six bucks a week, for six bucks a week. When I stood for council, I was keen to make sure that we cut out the waste. I learnt very quickly along the way, there ain't no waste, that this council actually does run things well, and our economic results show that. And my speeches modified significantly along the way, and I'm very proud of what the city does for its citizens. And sadly, I'm not going to spend a lot more time around doing much more of this, but I'm proud that I've been part of it as much as I can be. I enjoyed the audit and risk work, and despite Andy trying to lead me down the garden path with the reading, I really did enjoy that work. And it was work in which I was able to use the skills I developed in Parliament, the inquiring skills, the investigating skills, but also the skills of getting the best out of people. And it was a privilege to have people to work with that wanted to actually do the job. Nobody was in there to play politics, it was about doing a job. What a privilege. And even in Parliament, we had the political sides both ways, but even in Parliament with the Finance and Expenditure Committee, when the work needed to be done, the work got done. In the Commerce Select Committee, when the work needed to be done, the work got done. One of my greatest friends is Catherine Rich, the other side of the House. When I had my health problems a few years ago, it was Catherine Rich that came and supported me. I've never forgotten that. And she was a different political colour to me, but what a good person, what a great worker, and somebody that I was able to identify with as I developed those skills. And she helped me get the programme through, because on that committee, the numbers were tied. And she never once voted against progress, and I was enormously grateful for that. I want to thank the externals to the Audit and Risk Committee, as I said, but Kevin, I also want to acknowledge your team, including you, because on all occasions that the committee met, you were all there. The committee was taken that seriously by the executive leadership team that the seniors turned up, they contributed, they answered questions honestly and intelligently, and they treated the committee with great respect. And Kevin, to you and your team, I pass on my thanks for the efforts you put in. Right, now where are we going next? Not going to talk...
Towards the time limit?
Well, okay, I'm getting there, because I was about ready to get to talking about you, you worship, but we can forget that. I could share some thoughts about what I think about the electoral system and what I think about wards and all that sort of thing, but you know what, it really doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter. The truth of the matter is that it is what we've got. I'm personally not a fan of any of that, but hey, you know what? That's another argument for another day. What I do want to do is talk about a few councillors now. I want to thank all the councillors that said nice things about me. To the six people, well, I do actually, thank you, it means a lot. To the one, two, three, four, five councillors that are standing for mayor, thank you to all of you, and good luck. And I do have a solution, and Aiona won't be surprised. I don't see why we can't have a co-meritality, right? And all six of you can be mayor, and you just take your turns. So that seems to make sense to me, and it means that the election doesn't have to happen, but that is a solution. Right, to councillors. Aiona, you're going to be surprised at this. You're the hardest-working councillor I know. You're well-prepared before you come to meetings, you contribute well, and you always look for solutions. You have issues you believe about passionately, and like Ron's, so you'll never support a road. Good on you, stick to it. You weren't my favourite councillor when I joined, but you won me over. You are now, without a shadow, my favourite councillor. You are now, without a shadow, my favourite councillor. And I wish you well. The second one I wanna mention is Malcolm Sparrow. Malcolm, you're gonna be elected on the first ballot by a country mile. You are the mayor of Tala, by the way. Keep looking after those puppies, mate. And I love it when you get here and you sit here for a meeting, and it's going, it's late before we start. And Chair's not here, but worse than that, there's not eight councillors here. And you get the clock watch on, and you get ready, brassed off. I think you and I were the two that were always here about five minutes before the meeting would start. There weren't terribly many more. And anyway, all the best, mate, look after them puppies. I haven't got time to say anything about the rest of you, but thanks. Celia, this actually is your night, and I'm sorry I went too long. I do that. In Parliament, the speaker by now would have sent the whips around saying, "Sit down, you've taken too long." Last time you did it, I said to the whip, "You better go away, I'm still speaking", as he was coming to tell me to sit down. This is your night. You've led this city for the last six years. I've only seen three of it. But you've got a lot to be proud of. I'm looking forward, in your speech, for you to set out the legacy that, as you see it. Six years as mayor, nineteen years as councillor, is a huge contribution. And whatever else may go on in the rest of your life, that's a huge commitment to the people of Wellington. And you deserve thanks. So, goodbye from me. You won't have to listen to my frontal lobe get a bit compromised any further. I promise, I will not bombard you with public participation. Or with helpful hints. Or posts on Facebooks, or any other form of helpful advice. That's a promise. It's now time for a new chapter in my life. I have family responsibilities, I have business commitments, and I have a new passion in finance, which is gonna take my time. On top of that, I'm at an age now where I'm gonna volunteer my services to community services and agencies, should they wish to take it up. I don't wanna be paid for it. I just wanna use my services for good. In time, Margaret and I are going back to our spiritual home in the South Island. But we will never forget Wellington and the opportunities we've had. And, don't forget, go the Highlanders, and get your cheese rolls from Little Peckish.
Kenakuai, Rea Hapini Mursa. Please, give us your valedictory speech.
Kārāmā tātou. Kātē mēhia, apī kēa kātākua tāmāi te nēpōtē te mēhīmāi te te mēhia. Kia ngā mēa kaatua, e pāmā ki ngā tāki kua, te kōrīhera o pōrāke. Tatatao mēa, kāi kōrīhera i te tepu. Apīha, te kōrīhera, ngā kāia feina keino, kai pūna. Te nākatao, kārāmā tātou. Last night, I had a bit of trouble sleeping, only because I started thinking about the night. A bit of trouble, restless, we'd be a bit worried, a bit of trouble, restless. So I was, the dog was asleep, Pam was in another world. The dog was asleep.
This is not a point of order, do turn your mic front on.
So Pam, the dog was asleep, Pam was in another world, so I thought I'd read the Dominion Post. Anyway, I'm conscious that you're hungry. I'm conscious of the fact that there's another reflection of thought by Celia, Tatatao mēa. So I've actually, I'm gonna condense this a little bit. But I came in here, as you know, on the back of the Clean Water Campaign, or following it. And that was fourteen years of political involvement with the council. It wasn't some kind of external thing, some hobby, some occasional, let's write a newsletter. It was fourteen years, initially very difficult and battle, with the then-mayor, which was Mayor Lawrence, and the majority of the council at the time. And so there was that, you know, that full-on engagement which then led to the, if you like, the sixteen years that I've been here. They tell me that when I came here, I was the, only the second Maori to be elected to this council, and the first Maori in thirty-eight years. It was thirty-eight years since another Maori had been elected here. During this time, though, I've always been aware that we, as a council, have always been one with Maori engagement, despite many other differences. We have been as one. There have been puzzlement, there has been some eyebrows raised, but we've been as one. And one of the twists of this, when I think about those other councils in New Zealand, many of them that have a very, very high Maori population in their area, and yet they are extremely poor at dealing with Maori. Hence, some of those moves to try and get Maori appointed to councils, and appointed to the voting position. And the twist to that is, this is in areas of high Maori population. One of the ways I could interpret this, which I'm going to elaborate on, is that this council, politically round the table, on all the sixteen years I've been on it, there has been really goodwill shown, a willingness to learn, a willingness to participate and engage. Whereas those councils, in those rural areas particularly, have been very reluctant to engage with Maori. And that's one of the ironies and the twists here. However, you all know that while I'm strong, and have brought Maori issues to the table and helped some of you engage, I have opposed the appointment of Maori to the voting position round this table. I've seen the increase in tarrel around this table, and we've heard some great examples of this already tonight. The mayor, councillor Ritchie, and others that have spoken, and in past meetings. And that's a fantastic thing. I've heard the staff using tarrel. There has been this, if you like, not just talking the talk, but walking the talk. The left-right paradigm. Well, you know, I've come to the easy conclusion over many years, not just tonight, or at other times, that political life is quite a lot more complex than the straight left-right paradigm. Mark gave you an example, he just talked about Catherine Rich. Like a personal example. But it's far more complex than that. And when I was watching Barack Obama, just before he introduced Hillary Clinton to the stage when I was in the USA, some weeks ago. And to cut a longer story short, he said something like this, he said, "I welcome a contest of ideas. And there should be a contest of ideas, and there should be debate." He said, "But I have a problem when groupings caucus, in this case, the Republican Party, and it doesn't matter what the evidence, doesn't matter what the rationale, doesn't matter how much healthcare is needed in the USA, they vote and block to oppose it." So you've got that distortion of the left-right paradigm. And what I'm now gonna say has got no relation to the current electoral programme that's going, the elections. Look, can I just kinda say, kinda quietly, that political involvement from political parties, I accept that political parties will get in behind a candidate and lobby for that person, and I accept that. What I have a problem with is in the past, and as I said, I'm not talking about the election campaign, is in the past, when political parties have used their caucusing influence to make sure that some councillors vote the way of the party view. That has happened. And I just think there's no place for that, let me be clear on it. However, political involvement in other ways, fine. Reflecting on my own contributions to this council, some of you will know that over the years, there was one stage when I actually held three portfolios. Arts and culture, climate change, and citizens' engagement. I was only playing for one, but I had three of them. Right, that's fine. But I had three portfolios. And I just wanna make a brief comment. Climate change, with the help of very good officers and the buy-in of councillors round the table, was able to establish the first climate change plan of action. And secondly, help mould the climate change team of the times. And that has since been picked up by others, including now with you, David. Citizens' engagement, again. You know, I remember the first time I was asked by staff to go on a phone line, and we're gonna have to listen for hour after hour on telephone lines. And it was a useful exercise, but in fact, the amount of time involved in the four or five callers that called up in an evening, you know, there was those, and I'm not trying kind of trivialising it, I'm saying it's a matter with things like, we're always gnashing our teeth over how to better engage. But there comes a time when you have to actually balance up the input to get the output, you have to balance it up. And as you all know, many times have we seen twice as many staff at public meetings as we've seen citizens. To Celia and Mark, who are going. Mark, I just wanna simply say, "I look forward to you developing your artistic expertise, and I'm really encouraged by what I see and the things it's shown me." Life is short, mate, you gotta get on with it. And you are going to get on with it, and I look forward to that. Tatatao mēa, Celia. There is absolutely no question, no one can debate, that you were elected twice broadly by the citizens of Wellington. And I respect that outcome. I respect that outcome, despite the fact that we often, or we have disagreed. But I respect the manner of your position, and commentary has already been made about that, and I support those comments tonight. To the staff, our staff led by Kevin. I've talked at some of the meetings we've had, some of the private meetings, some meetings up in the mayor's office, and at performance reviews. I'm not gonna go all that, except to say, often when I'm at a dinner party, for instance, either at my place or someone else's, of late, people have been saying, "I bet you're glad to get out." Well, the truth of the matter is, I'm actually not glad to get out. And I say to people, "I'll tell you why." First of all, we have this fantastic support base of staff. And let's not forget, councillors, you know, the old saying, that when things go well, us councillors jump to take the credit. When things don't go well, we disappear, kinda thing, and it's the staff. Particularly Richard McLean. Particularly Richard McLean. Who have to face the music. And let's not forget that, you know, and let's just remember that about our staff. There is one thing I'm going to say in terms of going forward. We need to protect our staff a bit more than sometimes what happens round the table. We need to protect our staff. And none more so than observing the code of conduct. And you've heard what I've had to say in the past, I'm not gonna repeat it line by line, except to simply say, for those of you who are coming back, can I really plead with you that you put this code of conduct up on the table as the major first thing and the first meter? And that you observe it to the nth? And that you show the leadership that will be required, particularly when there's a chance that staff are gonna be compromised in any sort of way? And I'll just leave that there. There is one staff member who I'm gonna talk about, however. There is one staff member who I'm gonna talk about. Because Derek Frye and I, Derek, I did find correspondence with you, I've talked about this, we were going back to 1985, I think it was, Passion Reserves. And I forgot, I actually forgot to bring it. But with me tonight, but there's one aspect, there's a particular aspect of Derek's style that I wanna talk about. You know, sometimes when councillors have asked questions, have asked questions of staff, and Andy's a good example, because Andy is the master of complex arithmetic computations, and he ties us up in knots. He ties us up in knots with his mastery of quick figures. And I'm not sure how much is fact, how much is fiction? But Andy can throw out the mathematics like you wouldn't believe. And then Andy would turn, he used to talk, let's go back to the days of Gary Paul, and ask Gary a question. Gary'd look down to the left, he'd look down to the left, and the first person he'd nod to would be a German staff member. So the first things went to the German, Aunt Zona. Aunt's would speak in his very strong German accent, very precise, very rational. But I see Andy frowning, still not answer the question. So then Gary'd nod to the Greek. Stavros Michael. Stavros Michael. Now, none of us could understand Stavros because of his strong accent. None of us could understand him. And he would talk, and the only word I could understand was councillors. The only word. And he'd do that, you see. So Andy'd be really frowning by this stage, he'd be really frowning. So then they'd go to the Irishman. Then they'd go to the Irishman, John McGrath's sitting there. And John would talk very fast. And it would be an endless flow of words all joined together, again. And the more he spoke, the stronger the Irish actually got. You see, and we're just about ready to surrender. We're buckling at the knees. And there'd be a silence, then Gary'd look at Derek Frye. Derek Frye would stand up, and you know, some of you know this. Derek would stand up to give himself time, give himself time. He'd get his tie, he'd go like this with his chin. Then, not Bernie Sanders, but his arms had come out. His arms had come out, and he'd be on his feet like this. And he'd say something like, he'd say something like, "Councillors, what we have to do is we have to look at the wider picture." And this is just after having five people, we couldn't understand a thing they said. "We have to look at the wider picture, and councillors, what we've got to bear in mind", he'd say, and so going on. "Derek, you are still the master. You're still the master of that, there's no one can touch you in that regard." And I can only say to the LT, "Sit down with this guy sometime. Sit down with this guy." So that's that. A political mentor of mine, an advisor who's here tonight, often when I struggled with things that, if you like, cut across that left-right paradigm, when, you know, there was an expectation, I was gonna vote a certain way because of the context of the issue. And yet, deep down in my heart, I knew, and sometimes I talked about one or two of these things with Celia, the rates differential is the one I'm alluding to. Deep down in my heart, I was uneasy. Yet, for a while, I fell into the trap of the left-right paradigm, fell into that trap. And one day, I sat down with council financial officers, and I think the mayor might have been there as well. And I tell you what, in thirty minutes flat with a whiteboard, I knew I had to change my mind. I knew it was unfair what we were about to do to not at least try and address that issue of the difference. And my mentor, I remember ringing him about this. I said, "Look, you know, I'm gonna get hell from someone on the left over this, but I just cannot stay just blindly following this pathway." And he said to me, he gave me some advice, which I leave on this table for the last time. He said, "Ray, what you gotta think about is, what is fair? Not what is perfect, what is fair?" And I found that incredibly helpful. To round off, I noticed in the report, oh, I bought a few props. I bought a few props here tonight, but just before I round off, you know. When I first came in here, as elected, there was stuff in the papers. Now, I won't pass this round, I'll show you this picture. This was the day after I was elected, and it's me holding my dog. Well, about three days later, I get this really serious letter from the Wellington City Council that says, "We believe your dog is not registered." "We believe your dog is not registered." And I said, and I knew the dog wasn't, wasn't registered. And I said, "Well, how do you know that?" And she says, "Well, we saw the photo on the front of the paper, and so it was that." But then, and I know, look, I know this would not happen now, this next, but they sent a council officer around to my house. And when I sent, I... And when I, because when I sent, I didn't know that at the start, they must said, how do you know? They said, because we looked at the photo and we looked through the window of your kitchen and we saw the dog didn't have a tag. I mean, that part of it, I found, I was in disbelief and then I was angry. You know, I was angry, they looked through the window. And they said, and, and then we looked up in our registry and we saw your name was absent. So, so, so that's that one there. Then there was this one here. You see this, this picture of me hanging with, with Mark Branski?
We do have Friday as well.
That's right, that's right, I'm on another minute. Mark Branski, but that picture, that picture, uh, told a different tale a few weeks later when, uh, the mayor refused to chair a council meeting because I wasn't wearing a tie. So what happened was, um, a whole lot of the female councillors put ties on for the next council meeting, I still refused to wear one. And so, uh, Mark, I can see the shadow, you're stalking me tonight, he's out in the, um, he's, his photo's out there. So this, this last council meeting, I'm going to take that tie off, I'm going to take that tie off right now because I, I don't want Mark to win. And so, um, the dragon meets Tanifa, when my mother and my father met, a Welshman, my mother a Tanifa, representing Maori if you like, at a party in Garrett Street. So the dragon meets Tanifa, my, my mother slew the dragon. So what I'm now going to do is end my input into this with, um, talking about my own art and I wanted, if you all care to join in with us wider. This is a guitar I built some years ago with penguins and power and things. And so Billy, uh, would you care to join me up here please?
Could we possibly do it right at the end? Is that all right? And then we can do it now?
Go on, let's do it. No, this is for all of us. Pokari Kariana, na wairo tuuwa, fitiata koe hine, maaringa ana e, ehine e, ho ki mai ra, ka matea haui, te a roha e, te a roha e. It was great work with you all, kia ora no tata.
Well councillors, colleagues, members of the public, the patient media. Namaste. Shangwaha. Namahinui o te po. Cities are where change happens and it's been a real privilege to be mayor of this most beautiful city. I'd like to first acknowledge previous mayors and councillors and with the realisation that the next council will take a while to be back in the council chamber. Things are progressing well, but they're not, you're not going to be in there next month. I decided that we should actually have some of the reminders of our city on the way into what will be your council chamber for the next few years. So I want to acknowledge Mayor Wild, her, under whose leadership the sewage system was done, but again, she was finishing off what many people had led. And probably a little bit more fun than sewage system, the stadium, awesome. Then Mark's tourism and retail drive made Wellington such a very positive city. And it's great to see that picture by Matt Gaudy, now the, um, army artist, official artist, and it really captures the mood of the time. And some of the things we went through with Courtney Place and some of the style of the city, perhaps we could have moderated a little bit, but it still put us on the map in a lot of ways. And also on the waterfront, that could have been so thoroughly built up, that was not. And Mark, bless him, changed his mind about whether a casino was a good idea. Kerry's focus on creative capital has stood as well. Her reading of Richard Florida's books and the leadership shown there. And also, interestingly, on the climate change, where, um, she gave Ray the climate change portfolio and from that moment on, there was almost no, not quite none, I still remember Robert Armstrong, but not much, not much debate about the realities, a lot of debate about what we should do about it, but not much debate about the realities. And again, the opening the indoor stadium, the opening the Furry Waka, they were opportunities that were then passed on to me to do the formal opening and it was, I was really pleased, I'd voted for both of those. In fact, the Furry Waka, I think, was the only unanimous vote about anything on the waterfront. So your point councillor, Ahepini Mercer, about this council being in step with many Maori aspirations is absolutely right. I started my political career cleaning the beach in Island Bay and I met Marin Downing and she asked me to stand. If we hadn't met, who knows what different path that might have led to. And I'm really pleased that that ecological and biodiversity aim has been pretty widely embraced. Um, Ray, you take the stuffed penguin around and do much more practical work as well, but most people in the city today care about our native biodiversity and it's great to see the competing mayoral claims as to who's going to be what with which particular bird, gecko and other animal. I think we've actually changed the conversations in this city. Active transport was another theme that's continued and it's been a challenge. And I'm sorry councillor Leicester, but I've actually worked out how to arrive not sweaty. Part of it is the electric bike, part of it is getting up a little earlier, but I'm really proud to have met the next president of the United States on the bike. She would never have known it, but I'm really pleased because it put us on the map in a way. And I'm very pleased to have trotted down on my electric bike to acknowledge the new governor general and I think Patsy Reddy, like, um, Gerry Mataparra, will be an awesome leader for this country. And then the international connections. I was down protesting about the Moraroa Atoll with Fran and I acknowledge councillor Richie's work on the nuclear free capital and that's continued on into Mayors for Peace. Mandela, free Mandela and all of those debates about, um, homosexual law reform. And we now light up our Michael Fowler Centre with the colours of the rainbow, we fly the transgender flag, we've got Carmen Rupé beckoning us happily up Cuba Street. Now, those are little things, but they are the change of attitude that's important. I'd like to congratulate all of my elected colleagues on staying the course. You're all here at the, whether you've been here for one term, whether you've been here for three terms, whether you've been there for, um, quite a few terms. And I think the next council needs to draw on some of that knowledge and I hope that the people that aren't elected, aren't returning, will actually share some of their knowledge with, um, the council, though preferably as Mark says, not in public participation. Politics can be pretty tough, one day supporters are another day's critics, good news evaporates and bad news ferments. And I want to quote Edmund Burke, so I'm learning something from the chief executive, I'd throw a few erudite quotes in. This is written in the eighteenth century, so it does say he an awful lot. He well knows what snares spread about his path, from personal animosity, from court intrigues and possibly from popular delusion. He is reduced and abused for his supposed motives. It is in the nature and constitution of things that calumny and abuse are essential parts of triumph. So to all of you who are going through a pretty tough campaign at the moment, well done for keeping democracy alive. I do want to comment on councillors and I will make a brief comment about all of you, to all of you, to thank all of you. This council has been different in that both the previous three years and this three years, everybody has had a job as well as their ward responsibility. And hearing you actually address what each of you has achieved, I'm really, really glad that everybody has had a job. That's a big difference in culture. Also, all of those of you who've had an external appointment, you've worked just as hard as anyone ever did before for no extra remuneration. So well done to all of you. And let's start with the, one or two of those achievements. Councillor Young, you must be very proud of being on the Wellington Museums Trust and seeing the attic come to fruition and to the museum doing so very well. I'd like to also acknowledge your work with the adjacent property owners on getting those laneways actually working and making sure that people were aware of what was going on and were on the same page. Mason's Lane, Eva Leeds, all of those, an absolute delight to all of us and part of a very walkable city. Councillor Richie, years of service, not only culminating in the Town Belt Act and the addition of land, but also the open space access plan and much else. And, um, your passion for the whole city, but particularly the open spaces and botanic gardens is well recognised. Swampy, you bring a great voice, a great series of jokes, but a really serious attitude to, to work around, um, this council. For radio joke, you're amazingly modest. You've made many business investment developments go through Miramar, Kilburni, Kandala, Tawa, those are largely due to you. You've also represented us very well internationally when you've had to, um, Korea, laying the foundations for our recent friendship city with Seoul. And look forward to your continued work with Japanese Business Council. I have forgiven you for taking that word out of this document because by taking that word out, you left the whole of the rest intact and focused the argument on one word. So in retrospect, wasn't a bad thing to do. Carrying on around the east, Sarah, you're a passionate eastern ward councillor, you did what you said and you moved to the east. Well done and I think they should be very grateful for you. You've done some great work on libraries and community centres and you've really grown in the role. You'll say what you think, you know there's hard decisions and big numbers and you will vote the way that you think. You talk to lots of other people about it, but you make up your own mind. Simon. Councillor Wolf, it was a pretty tough call to give you an engagement portfolio and for you, when we have had so many engagements, I mean, I, we've talked about movie museums, cycleways, let's get Welly moving, consultation on playgrounds, on so many things and all of them have had pitfalls and staff have changed. I think we're now in a much better place, but it has been a real challenge and you've never said, I don't want to do this anymore. You've sometimes said a few things to me quietly, but you have had a real talent for coming and talking to me about issues that concern you and trying to solve them. So thank you for that. And your care with the youth council, particularly Eva, has been very inspirational. David, um, councillor Lee, you have charged ahead in the climate change portfolio. So many schools have got solar panels, um, you've turned smart energy into low carbon challenge, you've worked with building owners, you've actually brought, you still get your planner's hat on sometimes, but you do, if you could just be louder, you would be even more successful. But thank you and you, you often offer quiet but good advice. I'm just still worried that one day you and councillor Sparrow, who I'll come onto in a minute, are just going to crack up and get the hopeless giggles at the council meeting. I've seen it very close, but not quite yet. And councillor Sparrow, your community resilience, you are a resilient person, Neighbours Day was sort of made for you and the amount of work that you've done with the water tanks, but you also understand that two hundred litre tanks aren't the only thing, it's the thirty-eight, um, twenty-five thousand litre tanks as well. And I think you've been able to translate some of what I call emergency speak into language that people can understand and your great work on neighbourly has been awesome. And then now to the major committee chairs. Paul, Toyto Purniki, you were right, it was a good idea to bring them together and I really look forward to seeing that happen. Also, when you raised a flag about the J Poor Street Playground, for example, we'd gone out for consultation, the whole point is that sometimes we're wrong in what we suggest and you led the local community to make that very plain to council. As neighbours, we could probably agree more, but never mind, I look forward to some more walks. We had the funniest meeting, um, on Sunday, councillor Foster coming back from the landfill, councillor Eagle walking with a friend and his dog, not a pamphlet to be seen, and I was coming back from kayaking, so we had a small caucus on the south coast, which was very nice. But you've been a great chair and you've been a great emcee for lots of sports events as well. Joe, you've been, you have been really positive, thoughtfully positive, and it's been a great pleasure to work with you to deliver the economic strategy. We had some great times. I hope nobody's got all the photographs in China and, oh, well, it'll come out after, after, after the eighth of October, don't worry. I like the way that you've actually seen how the natural environment contributes to tap, attract attracting talent and, and thanks for all the weekends you looked after the dog. It's been a pleasure, Andy, as well as kayaking across the Cook Straits with you, we managed that, didn't we? And we've shared a lot of trials and tribulations, arguments about, but surely if it's logical, they'll all agree. That's not been our strongest point together, has it? And in nineteen ninety-four, I think we can look back to that time when you and I were on the subcommittee that actually set up the structure of the outer town belt and the urban limits that continued to make Wellington a contained wonderful city. Nobody here wants to build on our urban limits because they're having much more fun walking them, cycling them or seeing the biodiversity in them. So we've, we've, that tenacity's got the coastal track back on the agenda. And also on your urban development area, Victoria Street, Miramar Town Centre, there's been a lot of work and I'm sure many more things. Iona, Chair of the Environment Committee and Most Honoured Chair, I think we might say today. Water and Waste, you looked at me when I suggested water and waste. In fact, I'm going to tell a really wicked story. Iona is a very green councillor, but she had to be advised that it's best to take the tree out of the plastic bag before you plant it. You boosted heritage. I didn't think I needed to wait till after the eighth to tell that story. You've got a great work ethic, great cheering skills and you've got actually a very good moral compass and, um, you would never need to be told what the code of conduct was. So. Now, what most people don't know is that I actually married Iona in the course of this last triennial, you can't get much closer than that. I'll leave people to work that one out. And we've had some pretty tough debates, you're so principled that we couldn't, you know, you wouldn't agree that the Pukihau Memorial Park was worth a quick bending of a bit of legislation, but I assure you, it was worth it and I'm really glad that we've got Pukihau Memorial Park. Deputy Mayor, you're a cool head, he never sweats on the bike, see, um, who doesn't need to speak too much. Thank you for your delegated role at many, many events. Ian McKinnon, my first deputy mayor, gave continuity, a sense of stability, a sense of statesmanship approach. You've made me laugh, you've challenged me, you've stolen my moosley only in exchange for me stealing his white bix at work, at work, at work. And you're a great negotiator when a project's faltered, but you haven't done it through, not generally, through the media. You've actually worked with the different parties and actually come up with some solutions. And again, the projects, uh, too many to be mentioned, but well done. Now to the retiring councillors. Mark, you've done an awesome job as Chair of Arms and you're wise counsel and you've been an intermediary when necessary. I'm really glad that you show some vulnerability and some emotion. Maybe we could actually do with those gentler emotions around... Maybe we could actually do with those gentler emotions around this table a little bit more often. So thank you for sharing that with us. Ray, Tenakue, your guitar should have been here more often. I hope you're going to bring it on Friday, we're going to do a few more songs. You've connected incredibly well with the arts and the natural environment. And I think your crowning achievement is Toi Pornekii in many ways. That hive of artistic endeavour. You managed to find your partner there though, I don't know if that wasn't a conflict of interest. And, but you've, actually, you haven't just said, "Oh, there, that's done, that'll do." You've persuaded us to increase the funding and to support it. And it's been a real pleasure to lead that new art strategy which had Maori and contemporary arts at the heart of it. So it was a bit different. We're not trying to be a mini Melbourne or a mini Manchester. We're trying to be a great, big, wonderful, little capital city in the middle of the Pacific. I want to say some thanks to staff now. I want to thank all the policy writers, the ecology researchers, the contact centre staff, the cleaners who are probably waiting out there at the moment, lifeguards, librarians, the financial wizards, the com staff, and the hundreds of people in so many roles. And Kevin, thank you. It's a big call and a tight vote to invite you into the heart of Wellington as a fellow pom. We didn't get into as much trouble about that as I thought we might. I'm pleased that we did, as Kevin's strengths and my strengths are quite complementary. Our vigorous private debates are usually pretty fruitful. And you've taken our economic strategy, led and developed, and have got on with implementing it incredibly well. And have given the council a good name and confidence amongst business community and with resource consents and so on. But we picked somebody who had got a lot of experience in IT, a lot of experience in the private world. Some of you were perhaps a little suspicious about that. But what was so good is how smoothly our IT shared services and odyssey have gone. It's been remarkable for the amount of peace within the budget and the reports that are audit and risk. Democratic Services, I'm not going to go through you all, but well done. Usually provided me with chocolate, water, coffee and the right notes. What more could we ask for you? Much more significant as well, the ongoing advice when we want to raise something, when we want to bring a new matter to council. And I just want to say Fiona Dunlop, I believe from a text you're here. Hello Fiona. You can, you can tell everybody if any of us over the last 25 years have got anything wrong here. She is. And the mayor's staff deserve a special mention. It's not only my husband who brings me coffee. They work out indecipherable scribbles, teleport me from one appointment to another, check who's speaking, and they've all worked so hard. Special thanks to John for sound advice, I can interpret the accent now. And also to Wave. Wave needs manage my appointments and sometimes done the impossible and created appointments and put things together that I didn't think were possible. Executive leadership team, well done. And to all of the staff on low wages, one of my proudest achievements has been to bring the first stages of the living wage to this council and then to other councils after following us. And it's not just the living wage they're following us about. They're following us with Bioflex Cities, they're following us with Mayors for Peace, they're following us with Unmasked Palmer, they're following us with all sorts of things that aren't a great big monument and edifice. They're following us with the attitude that we have been brave enough to bring forward. Looking ahead, I'm not going to say much here, but housing, Paul's absolutely right. Our social housing is terrific, but we need much more housing. Our urban development agency that is now prepared must spring into action now we've persuaded central government that they're a good thing. Transport, my biggest regret is I'm not hopping on a light rail car tonight. But let's get welly moving is pretty ambitious and much more inclusive than the, shall we have flyover A or shall we have flyover B question? And it's a far cry to have got $37 million for our urban cycling compared to $70,000 when the 2008 strategy was set. I've said you're going to be moving back into the new town hall, the refurbished town hall. I think there'll be a green room, a recording studio, a chamber music auditorium, and of course, a superb big auditorium being the heart of the music hub. I am confident that the next mayor and our current chief executive will be signing that off in the not very distant future. I'd have loved to have done it, but there are organisations that work more slowly than councils. And the role of mayor has been an unparalleled opportunity to get to know this city as an immigrant, to get to know its history, its people, its heritage, natural built. I've learnt a lot about myself, both my virtues, few, and my limitations, many. And thank you all for being my tutors. I just want to finish with a little Maori fakatoki. I'll say what it means in English first. It's when one plant frond dies, another plant frond rises to take its place. Now, it's not a funeral oration because I'm going to move on to enjoy teaching and travelling, but I think it's appropriate. (speaking Maori)